Provision of section two point six eight point zero three zero of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. All right. Following that enforcement, enforcement clarification of preservation permit. If you are approved for a preservation permit today and you are not the contractor, please know that it is your responsibility to make sure that the contractor has a copy of the preservation permit before beginning work. The preservation permit includes items that require final approval and inspection requirements. The approved drawings are a part of the preservation permit. Following the preservation permit will save you time and money as enforcement of violations can sometimes be a lengthy and expensive process. The preservation permit is separate and not a building permit. No work can begin without the appropriate review and approval by the Metropolitan Department of Codes Administration.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay, we're going to go through our agenda as well, and the first one is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes, Ms. Ziegler?
Yes, quite a few. Four oh six Lachlan Drive is revised for administrative permit, so it's off the agenda. Number seven is off the agenda because notification requirements were not met. Four hundred Lachlan Drive is off for the same reason, notification requirements were not met. Twenty nine oh one Belmont has been removed from the consent agenda, so will be heard at the end. Nine oh seven Gilmore has, we're asking to move to consent. And seventeen oh six Eastland Avenue is a request to defer. So off the agenda for today would be number four, I mean, excuse me, number five, number seven, number nine, number twenty-four, with twenty-two moving to the consent agenda and twelve moving to the end of the agenda.
Give us a second to make sure we have our notes. Thank you, Robin. Okay, with those revisions, is there a motion to accept the revised agenda?
Motion to accept.
Commission, okay. Commissioner Cotton has made the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Vice Chair Stewart has made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you. Okay, and also the adoption of the January fifteen twenty twenty-five minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to adopt.
Move to adopt by Commissioner Cotton?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Price. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes also. Okay, so we have a couple of members, council members here this morning. Would you like to speak now or during the project? Please.
During the project, please.
During the project?
I can stand there but say it makes it more abhorrent.
All righty. Well, good afternoon. Appreciate y'all giving me some time to speak, as always, and I know it's been a, been a rough couple of weeks with the proposed changes from the structure of the commissions and the kind of staff logistics and all that, and just wanted to come today and share a couple of things. First of all, my, my deep respect and appreciation for all of y'all. Y'all spend a ton of time, staff and commissioners, serving us and serving the city, and I think that needs to make, I want to make sure that that doesn't go unnoticed through this process. That's really important. You know, additionally, I want to make sure everyone here, but also members of the public, know that, that at least I'll speak for myself, that I'm, I'm getting your emails and reading your emails. My job is to understand what people's perspectives are and, and really take that into consideration as we move forward. So I wanted to, you know, say that, that I'm do, we're doing that. I've appreciated having, having a number of conversations around this and intend to continue to, continue to do so, and I think that's really important. Again, speaking for myself, historic preservation is fundamental to me, and it's something that I will, I have protected and will continue to protect. I know y'all are considering a resolution about the study as well, so curious to see how that discussion ends up going. And again, I also recognize some of the flaws in that study. I don't necessarily disagree with them, the flaws, but, but I from, I would wanted to share that I'm coming from my perspective of what I've seen work really well. I think there's a lot that works really well with how this process works and some challenges that I've seen in addition. So I think it's an important discussion. I'm appreciative of all of everyone's time and efforts on it. I also did want to share that there is a Council Connect link up where members of Metro Council who cannot talk to each other outside of meetings are posting conversations and questions and things like that, so I would encourage anybody who's interested just to, to look at that. In that Council Connect, Councilwoman Benedict, the sponsor of the bill, did indicate that she would be moving at the next meeting for a public hearing on March eighteenth, pending the, obviously, council approval, but she did say that she intends to do that, which I appreciate. I think it's really important that the, the public hears that. I also have a town hall tomorrow at ten o'clock that I also intend to give some updates and hear folks' considerations, and also I'm trying to set something else up maybe over Zoom for folks who can't make it in person. So again, really just wanted to reiterate, you know, my respect and appreciation for everybody who's part of this and my openness to hearing feedback and thoughts and ultimately my commitment to, to historic preservation. Thanks so much.
Thank you. For the record, that was District Nineteen, Councilmember Jacob Kupin.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We thank you for your service. We always want to be courteous of that. And also, just to clarify, you were really going to speak on the resolution, and is there, was there anything else you were referring to in your, in your preamble? A bill that's coming forward, is that, was that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah. Just want to make sure we, because we context for, for, for the.
Yes, the, the bill that's before Metro Council right now regarding the, the Historic Zoning Commission.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate your time.
Appreciate it.
I think Councilmember Hancock will defer to the project. Okay, thank you, and thank you for being here as well, and we also want to have courtesy to you as a council member. Thank you for your time. Okay, staff?
All right. Okay, the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So we'll read each case out one by one. If you are here in opposition to any of these projects, please raise your hand when that item is called. Items removed from the consent agenda will be heard at the end of the agenda. All right. So the first item is nine oh five North Twelfth Street, new construction of an addition. Eighteen fourteen Ordway Place and eighteen oh one Lakehurst Drive, new construction of an outbuilding. Nine oh one Carruthers Avenue, new construction of an outbuilding. Twenty eight oh eight Brightwood Avenue, new construction of an addition and an outbuilding.
No, no, that was.
Okay. Okay. The next item, twenty one oh nine Belmont Boulevard, has already been removed. It will be presented at the end of the agenda. Twenty nine oh four Belmont Boulevard, new construction of an addition. Thirteen oh six Sixth Avenue North, new construction of an outbuilding. Forty two oh two Nebraska Avenue, new construction of an addition. Four thousand Cambridge Avenue, new construction of an addition with a setback determination. Forty eight eleven Elkins Avenue, new construction of an addition and outbuilding. Three fifteen North Wilson Boulevard, new construction of an addition that is a revision to a previously approved plan. Eleven eleven Calvin Avenue, new construction of an addition with a violation. And one sixty Second Avenue North, new construction of an addition. And then nine oh seven Gilmore Avenue, which has been added to the consent agenda, new construction of an addition. All right, so I'm just going to go back through these much quicker, much quicker. If you want them pulled, please raise your hand at this time. So nine oh five North Twelfth Street. Eighteen fourteen Ordway Place and eighteen oh one Lakehurst Drive. Nine oh one Carruthers Avenue. Twenty eight oh eight Brightwood Avenue. Twenty nine oh four Belmont Boulevard. Thirteen oh six Sixth Avenue North. Forty two oh two Nebraska Avenue. Four thousand Cambridge Avenue. Forty eight eleven Elkins Avenue. Three fifteen North Wilson Boulevard. Eleven eleven Calvin Avenue. One sixty Second Avenue North. And nine oh seven Gilmore Avenue. All right. So staff recommends approval of the items on the consent agenda with the applicable conditions, finding the applications to meet the design guidelines of their respective overlays.
Thank you, Melissa. With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Williams?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Seeing or hearing none, opposed, that motion passes. Okay, we have a bit of another preamble by our legal, Ms. Mickelson.
Good afternoon. This is just a reminder about how the hearing process works. First, staff will present a summary of the project and a recommendation. Then the applicant and all members of their team may present for up to ten minutes. The applicant may ask to save two of the ten minutes for rebuttal of public comment if there is public comment. After the application presents, after the applicant presents it, it is time for public comment, and each member of the public has up to two minutes to speak, although groups who've requested so ahead of time may speak for up to five minutes. The commission may ask follow-up questions, any presenter or member of the public, at the end of their presentation or comment, as well as during their own deliberations. The response times of these comments do not count against time allotments. Once public hearing is closed, applicants and members of the public cannot initiate exchanges during the deliberation period without an invitation from the commission to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mickelson. So on our, first of our agenda is, I'm sorry, the next on our agenda is number twenty, which is the Marlin Meadows. Just a bit of that as well. I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion as I have investment at, on the, under the overlay, so I will hand that over to the Vice Chair Stewart to take lead of this project and discussions by the commission. Thank you.
Okay, do we start with staff report?
Yes, sorry about that. I was, I was talking. We're, the, all of the research that was done for this particular overlay for Marlin Meadows was done by Robbie Jones, who's a professional preservation planner and historian, and so we're really lucky that he gets to be here today to tell you about his research firsthand. Thanks, Robbie.
Can you guys hear me? I'll speak, I'll speak loud. I'm Robbie Jones. I live at eight zero four Canton Pass in Marlin's Meadow, Marlin Meadows, and I've lived there for ten years and worked with the neighborhood documenting the history. I worked with Tony Hancock. She has sort of designated me the neighborhood historian. Also worked with her on other preservation issues throughout the, her district and sometimes throughout the city, providing advice from my perspective as a professional historic preservationist and architectural historian. So I just wanted to quickly, I'm a historian, so I have a lot to say, but I'm going to keep it short. The commission members received a copy of the history that I published per Tony Hancock's request on my blog, my Tennessee Architecture website, so you have that to read through. I just wanted to summarize it for everyone else who's in the audience or try to. But the Marlin Meadows neighborhood was developed in the nineteen fifties in the Neely's Bend, a peninsula in the Cumberland River in northeastern Davidson County. Historically, Neely's Bend was part of Madison, which was incorporated in eighteen fifty-seven and absorbed by Metro in nineteen sixty-three. It's a riverside subdivision platted in a semi-rural area that was once part of the Smith Gee Farm dating from the mid-nineteenth century. And that's the Smith Gee Farm on the lower right photo. In the nineteen forties, the farm was initially developed as the Madison Country Club with large riverside estates, recreational facilities, and a private airstrip, which you can see on the left. The original eighteen fifties farmhouse was converted into a dinner club. When the country club failed to materialize, the undeveloped land was reimagined as a residential subdivision with a mixture of traditional ranch houses and custom-designed houses carved, carried out in the variety of fashionable styles, including colonial revival, restic revival, split level, and mid-century modern. To develop our Marlin Meadows required that all buildings be constructed brick or stone on lots with a minimum size of a half acre. Developed primarily between nineteen fifty-two and nineteen fifty-nine, Marlin Meadows became home to people from a variety of socioeconomic backgrounds, from schoolteachers and factory workers to professors and business executives. Marlin Meadows was also home to people associated with Nashville's health care and music industries, including notable singers and songwriters. And I wanted to elaborate a little bit. In December nineteen fifty, the Board of Trustees for the Country Club sold the one hundred sixty-five acre property to Herschel Lynn Greer at a public auction for fifty-one thousand dollars. The purchase included the Del Monte Dinner Club and the lease of the fifteen acre Madison airstrip. Greer's business partners were members of the Board of Trustees, John U. Wilson and Ed Marlin. Greer was a prominent Nashville businessman, mortgage banker, and part owner of the city's professional baseball team. In nineteen seventy-eight, the Mississauga Baseball Stadium at Fort Negley Park was named Greer Stadium in his honor. Ed Marlin was a building contractor originally from Williamson County. From fifty-one to fifty-two, Greer replanted the Country Club into Marlin Meadows subdivision. It's named for, it's named after his last name, his surname, the subdivision's namesake, Marlin. The streets by nineteen fifty-one were under construction, stretching one mile along the river, Cumberland River. Street names in Marlin Meadows included Berwick Trail, Peeler Trail, Coggin Pass, Allen Pass, Nix Pass, School Pass, Marlin Pass, River Pass, and Canton Pass, where I live. These streets were named after the original Board of Trustee members and investors. In fifty-one, Greer advertised Marlin Meadows in the Tennessean with plans for, to include three hundred homes costing between eleven and twelve thousand dollars. He canceled the lease for the airstrip, which was razed and later replaced with Neely's Bend Elementary School, which still stands. And then he also sold the Smith Gee House to another family, who asked me separately to do a research for their own property, which has Civil War Association, Annie Bellum Plantation Association, which I documented separately, and you've read it in your packet. Most of the Marlin Meadows subdivision's beautiful lots were one-half to one acre in size, with the riverfront lots ranging from one to two acres. In nineteen fifty-two, the Tennessean published a real estate promotion for Neely's Bend that described Marlin Meadows as having just a little more to offer than you would find in most modern subdivisions. Here, you'll find large lots surrounded with a view that gives the appearance of a country estate for those that might be interested in boating or fishing. It's bounded to the south by the river, with lot, each lot having access to the river. The promotion was entitled Come and Live Where the River Makes the Big Bend Marlin Meadows. The first streets to be developed were the passes I just spoke about. They mostly built the brick ranch houses with three bedrooms and modern trimmings. They, by nineteen fifty-three, built seventy homes and thirty more were in the planning. I wanted to note that my own home that I bought ten years ago, which is in the lower left corner, was what I call a time capsule house. The owners, I was the third owner. The second owners had owned, lived there since nineteen fifty-nine. I bought it from their daughter. They had never made any changes. They were very tight, and so they didn't upgrade, which was great for me as a preservationist because I had all the original stuff. They left the wall heaters in place, they just unplugged them, and the steel kitchen, the four-mic countertops, the tile bath, everything. I did have to pull off vinyl siding from the eaves, and I put back a besta shingo replica siding, which you can order, special order from Home, Home Depot, and it's actually cement, and put that back in, restore, I'm working on the windows, et cetera. Metro Historical Commission gave me a preservation award in twenty eighteen, the first for ranch house in Nashville due to my efforts to follow the Secretary of Interior's guidelines. The subdivision was marketed mainly to military veterans through, with no money down GI loans and F A H, F A H loans. So I talked about the houses, and I wanted to close with some of the people that live there, because a lot of times that's what people are most interested in, the people, not the architecture. Most of the residents were middle-class men holding jobs at large manufacturing facilities such as DuPont, Ambrose Printing Company, Genesco, and Ford Glass Plant. Women typically worked in sales or schoolteachers. Some residents worked at Madison College, which is just down the road in Neely's Bend, as professors or as on staff. For instance, Bernard Bowen was the director of the School of Anesthesia. Harold Ezra Mitzelfelt was a professor of music, and his wife Sylvia was a piano teacher. It was also the home to Bert Ferguson, who was the president of the Madison Chamber of Commerce and president of Madison's Hillbilly Day Association, was hosted an annual festival serving as a fundraiser for local schools in the fifties and sixties. The Hillbilly Day Festival celebrated the large number of celebrities associated with the music industry that lived in Madison and also boasted a number of music recording studios. He built some mid-century modern homes, which I think was shown in the previous slide, slide. And this home on the left was built by Ferlin Husky, who was perhaps the best-known celebrity in Marlin Meadows. He lived here from fifty-five to sixty-seven. He was a music recording artist, television film entertainer. He discovered Dallas Frasier, who also lived in the neighborhood. While living in Marlin Meadows, they recorded a string of country and pop crossover hits including Gone and Wings of the Dove. They worked with Elvis Presley, Patsy Cline, Jim Reeves, and Ja Ja Gabor. I like to think that Elvis and Ja Ja came to visit and spent the night and partied at the house, which has a big swimming pool, and that's eight houses down from me, and I just think that's awesome. That house is currently on the market, if you're interested. And the last person I want to mention is Dallas Frasier, which was his buddy that he discovered. He was from Bakersfield, California. He wrote Grammy Award nominated songs such as Elvira. Everybody's heard of Elvira. There Goes My Everything and Beneath Still Waters, which was inspired by the Cumberland River, which he could see out his window. It was a number-one hit for Emmylou Harris. Other songs that he recorded were sung by Elvis Presley, The Beatles, Charlie Rich, George Jones, Diana Ross, Charlie Pride, Oak Ridge Boys, and Connie Smith. He was inducted into the Nashville Songwriters Hall of Fame in nineteen seventy-six. So it's a unique neighborhood that we all love, the neighbors that live there, I mean, the people that live there. I've worked over the last year with Tony Hancock and our neighbor Sasha, Sasha Laster, who couldn't be here today, documenting neighborhood history, talking to our neighbors about what they wanted to see happen. The main thing that prompted all this was across the street was the old Oldham Sausage Factory was redeveloped with a subdivision with over two hundred homes. The last couple of years, some tall skinnies have popped up in our neighborhood, some tear downs, and so we started getting concerned that what's happening throughout the rest of the city is coming into Neely's Bend, and what can we do about it? So we set up meetings with Robin Ziegler, Brett Withers, and others to talk about our options. We had several public meetings. Tanya shared the information, including my history on social media, E-News. Everyone I've talked to and Sasha's talked to are in support of this overlay because they see it as a way, a vehicle for us, as a way to prevent inappropriate additions, new construction, and tear downs. So there are, I think one person has spoken to me who's in opposition. He was under the impression that home insurance policies would be canceled if you're in a historic home, and that property taxes would go up. I confirmed with Robin that over eleven thousand property owners in Nashville live in overlays, and she's not aware of anyone ever having their home insurance policies canceled, or, and there's no special property taxes. If your property taxes go up, it's based on the fact that your property value has gone up, which often happens in neighborhoods in our overlays. So with that, I will close and to say a request that the zoning commission consider our application, and hopefully you will approve it. I'm here with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It was my understanding you were going to sing Elvira for us, right?
I've got a scratchy throat today, so I'm.
Oh, yeah, of course, thank you. Now it's going to be stuck. Thank you so much for doing that, and obviously, staff recommends approval based on the fact that it meets the standards of the ordinance and that we recommend approval of the design guidelines as presented to you. And I did just want to let you know that normally the very next planning commission meeting is when they would review the project, but they are, staff is asking the planning commission to delay until April twenty-fourth. The department has requested that the council members pause any large zone changes, including upzoning, downzoning, and overlays, until the initial findings of the report, the report on housing and infrastructure are presented in March. So I just wanted to let you know that that'll have a little bit of a different schedule than normal, but we recommend, we suggest that you recommend approval, and we recommend approval of the design guidelines.
Thank you, Robbie. Thank you, Ms. Ziegler. I'm assuming that's the applicant presentation?
I'm sorry, that you're assuming what?
That that's the applicant presentation, that we don't have a separate applicant speaking?
Yes, the council member.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll open public hearing, and Councilmember Hancock, would you like to speak to us?
I'd like to speak at the end of the public hearing.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. All in, in favor of this, would you like to come to the microphone? Are anyone opposed? Anyone wants, wish to speak on behalf of this project? If you'll please state your name and address.
Greetings. My name is Brad Brown, and I live at eight oh one River Pass. I'm an owner-occupant of the property within Marlin Meadows. I'm against the adoption of the overlay.
Just stand closer.
Do you want me to start over? Yeah?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. Greetings. My name is Brad Brown. I'm an owner-occupant of a property within Marlin Meadows. I live at eight oh one River Pass. I'm against the adoption of the overlay. January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, I received a letter of this very hearing. This was the first notice I have received. Not a letter, a sign, door hanger, nothing. In municipal codes, the only proper notification methods are signs every few hundred feet and UPS-delivered letters. Neither of those were done. Had they have been done, we may not be here today. The sacrifices homeowners give up to adopt this overlay just aren't worth it. Some of the very basic things, such as adding a front porch or any other meaningful modification to the front of the house, would be strictly prohibited. The overlay, as stated by council member, is an effort to circumvent Nest and the coming bill, BL two zero two five seven forty-two, migrating this commission under planning. This commission expects it to pass and leads to more demolition, proving that a properly motivated builder can defeat any protections. There's a blackout period for pulling any permit while the overlay is being considered. The commission should have the same blackout while existing. It sounds like they do now. The historical, skip that. Part of the historical write-up can be summarized in, a guy bought land, had, tried to do some development, build a country club, it failed, he sold it to a builder, a builder who then developed the land for profit. This being historically relevant should scare everyone in the county and set a very poor precedent. The builder developing the land sounds a lot like what the application is trying to prevent. For item three, staff has done a news spot on WKRN indicating it's not so much the features that stand out as much as the collective they tell as a story. So context, oh man.
Mr. Chair, the applicant was interrupted at one forty, so there's an additional twenty seconds of presentation.
Okay, sure. Thank you. I've only got like three sentences. So context is, okay, it's not so much as the features that stand out as much as the collective they tell as a story. So context is, is to be protected as homes themselves provide no distinctive features or architectural value. Again, reinforcing the goal of circumvention, not protection. In conclusion, I'm asking the commission to stop my homeowners' rights from being stolen and deny the application. Any other vote in this, by this commission would be doing this to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else wish to speak? Councilmember Hancock?
We welcome anybody to come closer and fill in if, if it might be easy.
We welcome anybody to come closer and fill in if it might be easier to hear and we can take a pause if that would help, if you want to occupy seats closer.
The sound system's not as robust here and all the mics don't amplify much. So if you want to move up closer, now's a good time to do that.
Actually, the only microphone in the room, and I apologize, we normally meet somewhere else. The only microphone in the room that is, for the room, the microphones here are for the recording, the video recording. So the only one is the chairs. So that's why you hear him so well. So I agree, if you, if you want to move up, that will help and we'll just keep asking people to speak as loudly as possible.
One records and it's on TV and the other one is for the room.
Oh, you mean I'm on TV? Uh-oh, I look good, don't I? I did this just for TV. My name is Ken Johnson. I live at 1040 Burwick Trail with my wife. We've owned the house there since 92. I actually moved there in 68. It was built by Cecil and Joyce Plummer in 1955 and I approve of this thing. Thank you.
My name is Mark Wayman. I've lived at 1052 Burwick Trail basically my whole life. My grandfather built the house when I was born in 1958. The house is basically the same as it was the day he built it. And I love my neighborhood. I love all of the people, the animals, the huge yards and just the quality of life that we have and I definitely approve this.
Madison has about 40,000 constituents and half of those live in my district. The other half are spread amongst four council districts and because everyone wants to have a little piece of Madison. I just, I'm lucky enough to get a bigger chunk. I would like to let you know that I started looking into this in February of 2022. So this was a year, a year and a half before the election of the current council members and a full two years, well, one year and 11 months before the Nest bill was released. So this was not in response to the Nest bill, but I just wanted to make that clear. And we were first talking about a contextual overlay and wondering if that would be the right fit for the neighborhood because there were some concerns about, there were many different lot sizes and we didn't want to pin anyone to, you know, how many homes they can build on their lot when you might have a really large lot or a smaller lot. So everybody wanted to keep their current zoning, but then we started talking about the historical and conservation overlays in November of 2023. So shortly after this new term started. So it's been a long time conversation. I'm, I think the only council member in the entire county that has two community meetings every single month. So I've had over 100 meetings with my district and for the folks that participate, I, you know, know really well, you know, what they want, what their needs are and what their concerns are. And you don't have to come to the meeting to participate. You can send me emails or call me and I take information from there. We had our first specific meeting about this project in particular on January 29th, 2024. Coincidentally, that meeting was the same day that the Nest legislation was released, but I couldn't have known it was released because of the sunshine law. And it was actually an interesting conversation with the neighborhood community member that was there. I think there were about three dozen people at that first meeting because Ms. Ziegler and Mr. Withers were both there and were able to explain that legislation to everyone, including myself, because I hadn't seen it. But there was a lot of discussion about how this neighborhood could qualify potentially for a historical overlay or a conservation overlay. And thus, the conversations continued. We had another meeting, I believe it was in March, and another meeting in May. I actually missed the meeting in May because my father passed away, but I trusted Robin and Brett to handle that. We had our neighborhood historian there and, and others came and still discussed the project. They didn't need me for that. So we continued talking about that at my regularly scheduled monthly meetings for the rest of the year. And it was clear to me that no one wanted the restrictions of a historical overlay. It was just going to be a little bit too much for this middle income neighborhood. And we really appreciated what had been done in the, I want to say Haynes Heights neighborhood with their mid-century overlay because it's a very similar community and style of the 1950s kind of era. And that predominantly African-American neighborhood that was able to get that overlay seems really pleased with it. So we've talked with the council member there and a few constituents from, from her district and decided that the contextual overlay seemed to be what everyone pretty much agreed to. The, the fact that the mailings come from the historical zoning commission and we have the commission meeting here caused a little bit of angst. So I did get a few phone calls this week asking me if this would restrict what color they could paint their house and things like that. And I explained that there are three main things this did and it reviewed any new construction, any demolition and any moving of homes. And, and we're not going to, you know, care which types of windows you're putting in, although congratulations to Mr. Jones for sticking with those OGs because, you know, that's what we obsessive preservationists, I think, do is stick to all those details. But in general, I think that the community really likes the almost step back in time when you go into this neighborhood and the, the calm demeanor, I guess maybe the, the 1950s look and feel is, is just a feeling of community. And so when you're walking around the neighborhood, there's not sidewalks, but people are walking on these streets and, and, and meeting their neighbors and talking to them, whether they're, whether they're cat people or dog people. And I just really appreciate being able to work with this community and help them meet their needs. So I encourage you to pass this and thank you very much for your time and your service on the commission because I know it's not highly paid. I appreciate you.
Any other public comments? I'll close the public hearing now. Thank you, Councilmember Hancock and all those who spoke and presented. We received four letters, the commission did, and those have been distributed, including one from Mr. Brown. Those were all made available to the commissioners as well as the public on the, on the website. So closed public hearing, commissioners, discussion?
Yeah, sure, I'll start. I want to share that I've known Robbie, thank you, for going on 20 years or more now and I would have expected no less of an excellent presentation and, and research. So good job, sir. Thank you, Commissioner, Councilmember Hancock. I think these are leading back on each other. Yeah, it's hard to speak. I'm impressed by the amount of, I don't know, sorry, got feedback issues here. Thank you. Amount of research and community work that went into preparing this application for a conservation zoning overlay. I, being a resident of an overlay myself, I see every day the benefits that come from it and I'm in support of this application.
I'll try to speak, can you hear me in the back? Try to speak loud enough. One of the things, and this is both for the commission's benefit and for those in the gallery, oftentimes these, these come before us and it is, I think the perception might be that it's a contest of those for and those against. And our charge as commissioners is to evaluate the application. Does it meet the standard by which an overlay would be established and are the guidelines appropriate? Does it meet the Secretary of Interior standards, which is federal regulation? To be able to approve an overlay where that contest, if you want to call it that, or where those arguments really bear the most weight is, we make a recommendation as to the appropriateness of an identified area and the, and the work that went into that and make a recommendation to the council and then the council in turn will either approve or disapprove of that recommendation. So I, I wanted to put that out there as, as part of our charge and part of what we're here to do.
So far away from the microphone. I just wanted to, since we did have someone bring up the process itself, I think it's always a good opportunity to talk about the process and how this happens and educate folks who may be listening or may be here that don't know how the notification process works, how this comes about. Robin, would you mind just summarizing that and how the notification process works?
Thank you. So if anyone couldn't hear, he was just asking about the process. The way the historic overlays work, it is a grassroots effort. It is not something that where we go into communities and tell people they should do this or tell them they're gonna do this. Neighborhoods come to us and they ask us for this protection. So that's how this one started too. There was a call, I don't, I don't even remember who first called me, might, may have been Robbie, I don't remember. Just looking for some information. So as they both said, Councilmember and Robbie both mentioned, there were multiple community meetings that the neighborhood set up, not us. And we gave information about a contextual overlay, which is a planning tool, and a conservation overlay, which is a historic tool. And so the neighborhood decided which tool might work best for them and that's what the council member ran with. And so after all those community meetings, then once a council member files legislation, it starts a more formal process. And that starts with a public hearing here today, a public hearing with planning, which we expect on April 24th, and a public hearing at council. So there's still two more opportunities for people to speak and to tell decision makers what they want. The decision today, if the commission does decide to approve, it is just a recommendation. Planning's decision will be a recommendation and council will be the final decision maker. Thank you.
This is my first overlay, so I'm very excited. Could I impose a few questions just on the scope? How many homes are in this, will be included in the overlay or parcels, however, or we do that?
I apologize, I don't have that number here in front of me. Robbie, do you-
It's around 300. 300, all right. Thank you. Oh, and sincerely thank you, Mr. Jones, for this report. It looks like you've done a lot and I know it's an effort of love and, and thank you. Do we have any numbers as far as how many attended the meetings, how many were in support, any type of petition, poll, roughly?
There were about 36 people at the first meeting. At the second meeting, there were about 12 and I was not at the third meeting, so I do not know. But I do have a number of emails and I could do a quick count on those too.
Well, I was just curious if, I know when we looked at making a change in an overlays regulations, a poll was sent out, the, we, we had quite a bit of, we tried to get an understanding of the feelings of, you know, the entire, the entire neighborhood. I don't, I honestly don't think 10% come to a meeting is, is bad participation, that, that, having been to a few of, a number of these meetings. But I didn't know if we had any inclination or you felt in those meetings overwhelming support or divided or?
Yeah, I mean, in the meetings that we had for this first three official Marlin Meadows only meetings, it was a lot of just wondering what this would do, but I think the overwhelming feeling was everyone wanted to do something and that's why we were really discussing whether, you know, contextual was, was quickly dismissed and then it became, would it be conservation or would it be historic? And that's where everyone was super in alignment there on wanting to go with the conservation and not get as, I guess, tight or rigid as a historic overlay might be. And mostly, you know, because of the nature of the homes being 1950s and being primarily a middle income and retirement, but a lot of DuPont retirees and military retirees. I do think that throughout the year, we still had people at almost every single one of my community meetings talk to me about this. Even the last meeting wanted, wanting to read the guidelines, but other than the one individual that was concerned that he, his homeowners' insurance would be canceled, all the other folks that attended the meetings were supporting the plan.
Good.
Just a reminder, sorry, that people speak, they want to respond, you want to come up that way, gets captured on the microphone and recorded.
All right. Would, could you paint the house under this?
Yes, we don't review paint color in this district.
Okay, good. Because it looked like a lot of people had done that to their homes in there. What about any violations? I guess everything as is currently is grandfathered in? I mean, I noticed a lot of sheds, carport stuff that I do not think would meet guidelines once in place.
Of course. No one is required to undo anything they have existing, certainly.
Right, okay.
It's just for future new construction and future demolition.
Right. Which would include an, an outbuilding, adding a carport.
Right.
A back porch. I, I saw a lot of that. I just want to make sure people knew that was not going to be allowed under, under a, I, I honestly-
No, additions are allowed, carports are allowed.
Okay.
New construction is absolutely allowed. It's just-
An aluminum shed in the back within 10 feet probably isn't right.
Would an aluminum shed in the back be approved? Is that what you're asking?
I, I assumed it would not based on some of the cases we've had before, but honestly, it sounds like I should have come to one of these meetings because I might need a refresher-
Yes, a small shed would also be allowed.
Okay. Awesome.
May, I, I believe a shed that's less than 100 square feet isn't reviewed.
An outbuilding. There, there's a lot of kind of commercial prefab sheds, but there were also some nearly commercial looking metal outbuildings that I-
Yeah.
Do what?
A certain sized shed is exempted.
A certain size shed is exempted, just repeating, I'm a professional historian, Robbie Jones.
Okay, I hear you. Okay, thank you, that, that sounds good. I know this is not the forum to talk about kind of zoning or down or up. I think I'm going to be in the minority in this one. It's totally fine. I, I looked at this, I, I drove through it a couple of times. Obviously, I don't have nearly the historical connection or personal connection to it. I don't really see how it can meet the guidelines one and three that were proposed. I, I, in my view, as I'm sure in the minority commissioner, associated with an event that's made a significant contribution to local, state or national history, I'm, I'm having a hard time with that one. And number three, represent the worth of a master or possess high artistic values, not to say anything bad about the construction, which were of its time and good, and it does represent the construction of its time. So I guess it, it, there's a clause in there that I guess it could do. I just, I think that applies to many, many neighborhoods and that's setting a pretty loose precedent. So I, I don't think I can support it, but I'm, I'm sure I'm in the minority and, and I appreciate being educated and, and I hope, I hope the, the neighborhood enjoys it if, if it continues on its path. Thank you.
If I could, I wouldn't, I'm not trying to change your mind, I just thought this was a great opportunity to talk and to kind of explain some of those criteria. And one of them is about a district represents a broad event in our history. And I think a lot of times people think of that as a specific event, like a civil war battle happened right here. And really, it's about broader types of events. So this is kind of our, our first housing crisis, if you will, this mid-century. Men were coming back from war, they were starting families, we needed a lot more housing than we used to have. And so you had these kinds of developments that were happening outside of the city, suburban type developments, and you had- happening outside of the city, suburban-type developments, and you had these very modern homes, like the whole concept of closets in some of these homes was new, these were very modern kitchens. And so in that way, it helps tell the story of us, of Nashville and our development. Um, and this, this whole housing crisis and the men coming back from the war. So that's what's meant by sort of that broad patterns in history. I just wanted to throw that in there, cause often people think of like one event, but it's bigger than that.
That is an excellent explanation and I appreciate that. Section one says an event. I, I hear you, and I don't think a farm being turned into a subdivision is of any historical significance. I think that's been done for hundreds of years, as long as there have been farms in uh in Tennessee. Um, and we're in a current housing crisis, and I don't think downzoning three hundred pieces of property is the way to go about that, but I know that's not what we're here to talk about.
Yeah, it doesn't sound downzone the property at all. It doesn't change the zoning, it's.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I think, or I think this current zoning, this would not enable development that would match its current zoning with contextual overlays uh or historic overlay, uh conservation overlay, excuse me. I, again, I'm gonna be in the minority, totally fine, I wanted to to say a little bit of my piece and I know, I know I'm, I know I'm uh maybe in the wrong forum. And and again, that, the housing crisis that I think the country Nashville faces is, is not what this board is, is, is for. So um anyway, I, I, I hear you, thank you.
I have a weak voice, but I'll try really hard. Um, well, I'm, I'm opposed to, to your view, and I'll tell you exactly why. I grew up in a house very similar to this one, in a wonderful neighborhood, in a very small town, and it does, it did have the flavor when I grew up there of a very important part of our history. My father was a World War Two veteran, my mother was a schoolteacher. That house to this day has the very same ovens, and we thought we were the Jetsons when we moved into that house. They were so modern and they still work. It had a cooktop, which nobody had. It was great, and yes, that does need to be preserved and appreciated. Thank you.
I, I will, this point of clarification, uh, the zoning is totally separate from this. So the, the density of an area is totally dependent upon the zoning, uh, it is not controlled by the, the conservation overlay. And so, okay, any other comments from the commissioners or motion?
Appreciate everybody's comments and feedback. Um, with respect to the Marlin Meadows neighborhood conservation overlay, I move for approval of the staff recommendation.
I have a motion from Commissioner Price, you have a second?
Second.
Second from Beth Cashin? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. All opposed? Opposition by Commissioner Smith?
No.
No? Okay, uh, motion passes, so we'll move on to the next.
The next case is thirteen oh one McKinney Avenue. Uh, the house at thirteen oh one McKinney is a circa nineteen twenty-five house that contributes to the overlay. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, the Metro Historic Zoning Commission approved and permitted an addition to the historic house and an outbuilding in the rear yard. At the January twenty twenty-five public hearing, the commission voted to approve the applicant's proposed violation correction plan with conditions. Uh, following the commission's decision, the applicant submitted revised drawings that met all conditions, and the preservation permits for both the addition and outbuilding were revised to include those revised drawings. Uh, those addition drawings can be seen here on this screen. The applicant has now submitted a slight change to the previously approved proposal to correct the addition violation. Uh, the proposal is a revision to the east side elevation, uh, that's the side here shown on the screen. Um, uh, east side elevation of the previously approved correction plans. The top image on this slide shows the addition as approved and permitted in January, and the bottom image on this slide shows today's proposed change. Uh, you can see it's just adding that little piece um behind the side gable there. Um, because the proposed change is small, staff finds that the proposed change might meet the design guidelines, as staff found that uh we couldn't make that decision given the past commission decision. Um, so given the previous commission decision that the east side elevation should be constructed to, destructed to the originally approved and permitted plans, staff is recommending disapproval of the proposed revision to the east side elevation of the previously approved addition, um, but the commission might find that it could be okay in this case since it's just such a small change.
Thank you, Joseph. Is the applicant here? Please come forward and, and give us your name.
We can share, we'll share.
And, and do speak right into that mic.
Yes, no problem. Hello, all, my name is Michael Brady, um, I'm one of the owners of this property. Um, we made a mistake, okay? Um, we, we framed this addition uh not according to our original plan, um, and unfortunately, it was not caught for several weeks. And so when we did figure out we had an issue, um, we had already done several rough ends, we'd already roofed the house. Um, so what we're proposing today, if you're looking at the picture here, this is the east elevation, we've created a dormer, which is what the original plan was, was asking for. Um, if you look at the second page, this is the uh, the only sightline to that east elevation from the street. If you go any further to the right of this picture, the house next door obscures the, the uh sightline. If you go any further left, the house itself and the eaves, the original um structure of the house obscure the addition. Um, as you can see here, it gives the appearance of the dormer, which is what the original plan um was, was calling for. If you flip to the next page, um, there's a green circled space, this is what we're asking be changed um from the original plan. This elevation, this small section here, um, from when we moved the uh, the roof down to create the dormer, this matches identically the same detail on the other side of the house which faces the street. Um, that was an approved detail, so we're asking that this uh also be approved to match that detail on the street side. The next page shows that same detail on the street side. You can see that we'd have the two-foot step back from the roof according to guidelines and that the um, the, the vertical face of the detail um stays within the original roof line of the house. The next page is just a picture of the rough ends that we've completed. Um, if that wall were to be required to be moved, all of those would need to be redone. And then the following picture is below where the main panel is for the house, um, just again showing a, a bit of a hardship if we were to have to uh slope this wall, dramatically changes our rough ends, um, and also the uh footprint of the master or primary bathroom. So uh hopefully you guys will consider this small change. Um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Not at the moment.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna open public hearing. Anyone here to speak on this project? Oh, okay. Um, since no one is uh haven't, has any comments in the public or in the galley, then we will close public hearing and we'll have discussion by our commissioners. Um, Steph, could you put up the figures again of what we approved in January and what is it now?
So the top one on the screen is what you approved in January and the bottom is what they're proposing to change, and that's just adding that piece there.
Can, can you go and show us which piece?
Sure, yes.
You can point to it, but.
This little piece right here.
Ah. I know it's hard to tell on a, on a elevation sometimes, you've got white and black and, you know. Uh, commissioners, that, does that help? Okay, good. Alright, um, discussion on that?
Sure. Um, I find with the small size of this proposed change and the overall uh small size of the addition in general, um, that it's behind the, the roof line ridge recessed two feet according to uh how, how the guidelines are written. Um, I've echoed Joe, Joseph's comments that this could be um, in, could be consistent with the design guidelines for the overlay. And, and I can remember other similar cases where additional, we've approved additional headroom behind existing dormers, uh, and I think that this is an example of something that I, I would have not had a problem with from the beginning had it been proposed and that it, that it does meet um the neighborhood overlay guidelines. So I'm, I'm okay with allowing this, uh approving this change.
Can we back up to the previous slide, please? Has, uh, this may be a tall ask, have, uh, has the staff verified the width of the remaining dormer to match and or can the applicant um verify that it's nine feet in whatever dimension there?
Yeah, it, it's nine feet on the drawings, um, I have, I, I don't have the dimension of what it is in the field, the applicant might, is it, i- it's nine feet, the, the dormer?
Can you repeat that for the record, please?
Yes, uh, the applicant stated that he, they did build the dormer to the nine-foot specification there on the drawings.
Yeah, the, the photograph just looked, I, I just wanted to verify, the photograph made it look a little.
Looks big.
Yeah, it, it looks bigger, but I, I mean, I get that we're, we're looking at a two-dimensional representation of a, a three-dimensional piece here. I, I have no further comment, I, I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Price, it, it's um, where, where it um, part of the original application, uh, might have looked at it a little bit harder, but I, I, I don't see it um contrasting greatly with what we might approve had it been originally submitted, and I, and I think the break in creating the dormer um certainly brings it away from what was constructed and then corrected and and uh it, that those two things were a bit of a different ask um from the get-go, so I'll stop talking now.
Commissioner Cashin, did you want to have a, uh, you, you were on the green light.
Oh, I just hadn't turned it off.
Okay, it's alright. Anyone else? You know, we also want to thank the applicant for working through, you know, it was a complicated uh drawings and the things that you were working with, and I know that um the architect route was really, um, cause we, we, we saw this last month, um, but we just, you know, we want to thank you for, for really digging in there and, you know, working with the staff so that we could get this approved. Yeah.
Yes, I, I want to say thank you very much, I, I think it has been a process, and so we do appreciate that.
You did hear the commissioner, right? Yeah, sometimes we have soft voices. Okay, if there's no other discussion by the commissioners, then let's make a motion.
So, and, and the other thing I'd like to thank them for is, is elevations are a lot of times not as revealing as photographs, the photographs are well-selected and really helped us to be able to understand what was going on, we appreciate that. Uh, so um, I do have a, a staff question, Joseph, if we approve this as opposed to disapprove it, are there any conditions that need to be put upon it?
Um, maybe with all previously approved um conditions, um, so material reviews, uh, this is just a revision to the, to the existing permit, they are, they've, these drawings, the top drawings were permitted, so it's just adding that, that little piece, so it would um still follow all of those previously approved conditions.
So with respect to uh thirteen oh one McKinney Avenue, I move for approval of the documents as presented with uh previous uh conditions as uh stipulated by the staff.
Okay, vice chair has made a motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cashin, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you again, appreciate it. Okay, so nine oh seven Gilmore is on consent, the next one is?
Nine forty-seven Mansfield Street. Alright, so the house at nine forty-seven Mansfield Street is a circa nineteen thirty brick bungalow that contributes to the historic character of the Maxwell Heights neighborhood conservation zoning overlay. So this request is for partial demolition of openings on all four sides of the building. Um, there is not an addition proposed with this application. Um, so, oh, I think this is a, an earlier version. Um, okay, so also just a note on the drawings, um, you'll see that, that there is a discrepancy as we go through on the location of the front dormer, just wanted to make you aware that we confirmed with the applicant, there are no changes proposed to the front dormer, so. Uh, so the front facade currently has three door openings, and the applicant proposes to retain a central door opening and convert the other two doors to paired windows. So in general, um, changes to openings on a historic house um on the front as well as the side elevations forward of the midpoint are typically not appropriate. Um, however, since the proposed openings are in the same location and approximately the same width as the existing openings, staff finds that the proposed partial demolition can be appropriate in this case. Uh, in addition, staff would recommend that the shortened openings for the um, the doors on the, the right and left side, um, when they are infilled, be infilled with brick, um, and that a brick sample be reviewed prior to purchase and installation, and staff would also recommend that is a condition uh for all openings that are approved to be removed or altered. Um, so, um, we can see here the side elevation, the top image is an as-built drawing of uh, of the house, and the bottom is the proposed. Um, in the staff recommendation, there was um a nineteen sixty-eight photo that you could clearly see the openings on the right side, which have not changed since that photo. Um, the applicant proposes to retain only the paired window opening closest to the front on the lower level and a small square opening above it. Since there's no evidence that the openings on the right side elevation have changed, staff would recommend that all openings forward of the ridge, uh, which you see kind of the line that there and then forward, which would be to the left, um, be retained. Um, in addition, the applicant has proposed to add um one, an additional window in the area of the bedroom towards the rear, so. Um, so staff would recommend retaining those openings on the side forward of the midpoint, which we're going to just identify as the location of the ridge. On the left side, again on the top, the as-built, the bottom, the proposed, um, you see the only uh window openings that are proposed to be retained are on the lower level, the, that paired window opening and the smaller square window opening. Again, staff would recommend that the openings forward of the ridge, which is approximately the midpoint, be retained, there's no evidence that they have been changed. Um, also, there, the only new opening beyond the midpoint is a glass block opening in the area of a, um, a bathroom. The applicant has agreed to um, for that to be a standard window, um, and there, there are methods that can be used to either frost the glass or add film that will provide some uh opacity for that opening. And then an additional window opening near the rear is proposed as well. So for the rear, all of the proposed openings uh are proposed to be changed, which can be appropriate given the location at the rear, which is not at all visible, and if an addition were to be proposed in the future, that wall could be removed. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed partial demolition of openings uh with three conditions, one, that the window openings on the side elevations forward of the primary ridge be retained, uh, two, is regarding material reviews for windows, doors, and a brick sample, and three, that revised elevations showing all changes approved by the commission as well as the correct location of that front dormer be submitted prior to uh issuance of permit. The applicant is here.
Thank you, Melissa, have any questions for Melissa at the moment?
Melissa, I've, I've got several.
Okay, go for it.
Go ahead and knock those out.
Yep.
Um, can you go back to the picture of the front elevation?
The front elevation.
Yeah. So, um, when, this is a constructibility issue that I, I hope helped. So when, this is a constructibility issue that I, I hope helps, but I wanted the staff's opinion in the evaluation. So if we go with a central opening and the two doors are infilled, I can see that there's a sill at each one of those openings that's not reflected in the proposed drawing. It would seem appropriate to me if that's going to be infilled with windows. Is brick the right choice there or would a, you know, just a solid, something that resembled would be more appropriate?
I mean, that's up to the commission. Typically, we've, most people typically want to go back with the brick. And I think that's been a requirement before, but I mean, absolutely, if you find something to be as appropriate, that would be fine as well.
I'd, I'd be interested in other commissioners' opinions. I, I think this is not, this is unusual in my experience. And I think that the further, once you start to tooth this in, there are great brick masons out there, but once you start to tooth this in, the drawing of what's proposed is not reflective of what, how a window might most easily go into this opening and you've already got all the brick returns. Are the joints gonna, you know, is the mortar gonna match and some of those other things? Are we, and I don't know if, if the masonry would not, would a painting of the masonry, so it looked uniform, be possible here without review?
Yeah, that, that would not be reviewed in this type of overlay.
I see. And so that might render my opinion or question moot in, in that situation. But it certainly would cost less if those sills remain. But again, we're, I guess that's our job is to get into some of these details. And I think pulling, pulling those out, I'll leave that to the applicant. But I, I think the more that this can look like it's a historic asset and the more that we respect that, I'd say the better. Couple of questions on, and just one question on the side elevations and the applicant can speak to this when they, when they come up. The existing on the top is that, is that a stucco with stucco infill sort of that setup is, is what it is and that's going to be removed?
Looks like a board and button. You kind of see that some of them look to be shifted, but it seems like the same materials are proposed.
They definitely are shifted. I just wanted to be clear, is that the intent or was that just a, an issue of the drawing? Because there's maybe some brackets that are being added or I didn't know what the applicant.
Wait, wait, we don't have, oh, you want to go ahead?
Well, not just yet. There were a couple of things for staff.
Let's get, let's get the questions first before the applicant has an opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Sorry, I was just saying, I don't know what the intent, if it was the intent or a drawing error. So I was going to let him answer.
The applicant speaks that, sure.
But if, you know, if someone were to come along and needing to repair or replace some stucco, that's not something that would be reviewed.
In this, well, that helps me, yeah, that would, that would help me as to what suggestions and or requirements we, we might make or have. And, okay, well, that answers the question. Thank you so much.
All right. If you need to go to another slide, just hit there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hello, my name's Jason Griffith. I live at 600 12th Avenue South, Nashville. And this is one of my projects here. Let me see. So I was just gonna go around and go through this and address. So we're on the front elevation, well, we're on the side now. But addressing the dormer back there, it's, the draftsman has just kind of, as he's drawn it a couple of times, it's, it's kind of changed his drawing. That's not getting changed at all. She said that. The front elevation, let me go back. Okay, the seal, our preference is brick. Of course, it'd probably be cheaper to do wood, but the seal to me could go either way, whatever's recommended. I'd be, you know, not opposed to bricking on top of the seal. The plan is to paint the house so we wouldn't have an issue with mortar or, you know, and of course we'll pick out a brick that's close enough that shouldn't be an issue. Let me go, so. And most of the houses down there, you've seen them, they're either two windows like that or a window with two lights on them. We've, we've proposed the two windows. On the side, the elevations, the, the reason, one reason that the bottom, the proposed, doesn't have any more windows is because dealing with staff, which y'all have been great, but the, we were just dealing with, you know, the front forward. So the proposal was not really to, in our minds, to say, no, we're not putting any more windows in it. It was just that on the front, this works better for our new drawings as far as the 50%, you know, from the E up. So we were asking, and let me go back. This house is not, I would say this is unique because this house was a triplex that seems to be built as a triplex. So it has an exorbitant amount of windows in it. I mean, like, it's, for us to buy historic windows, it's, it's huge, you know, $50,000, $60,000 just for the windows, as is. So we were, number one, trying to make it fit our drawings without, you know, having to cover windows up on the inside. And two, cut down on some of them. And if you go through the neighborhood, this house is unique that it has so many. The other houses have single windows on the side and different placements up and down. So I don't think we're asking to, you know, to not be historic. I love the historic homes and that's one of the reasons I'm, you know, restoring this. But I'm just asking for leniency on placement and the functionality of it. Because like I said, and you can see, it had so many windows because of the so many different rooms and different, the different use. So on that side, from the E forward, the, the top on each side, the rear right, the rear left, are bedrooms. That would be no problem to put, to put a window on that side. But we were, like I said, we were dealing mainly with the, and that's why we proposed that. We thought they were just asking for a window on the rear. But we're not opposed to that. I'd rather not, I would ask for leniency that we can either put it on the back or not put one right there in the center towards the front on that. Let me go back on that, that'd be the right elevation. Another thing, these houses are really close to each other. I mean, when you're at the street, you can barely see these windows with the fences and everything, even without the fence. You're not looking at a full side view, you know, you're talking, on the left side, it's 10, probably 10 feet from the other house. The left side, again, the draftsman drew the, the block window, but that was not ever a consideration. We wouldn't put that type of window in there anyway. But not opposed to the shading, it is a bathroom. Would like to do those windows as is. Again, not, we were not, we were considering windows on the back anyway, but we just didn't think for this, that we were, you know, we were just trying to identify from the, from the E forward, from the ridge forward. So that's that. And that's about it. I mean, everything else, we're trying to keep, you know, the footprint's the same. Just trying to bring this thing back to life, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
We may have more questions for you, but for now. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? I want to start. If you, just a question to the staff. Are the windows original to the house?
So on the right side, and I wish I had included it here, it's definitely in your staff recommendation. There is a circa 1968 photo, which is the earliest photo we were able to obtain from, it was from the property assessor's office. It's kind of an oblique view. You don't see much on the front, but you see very clearly that all of the existing openings on the right side are still what is there now. When you kind of look at aerial photos over the years, on the right side is clear, nothing's changed since then. On the left, it's a little murkier just because you have some ivy growing on the side, kind of close to the front. There was an exterior stair at one point that was removed maybe around 2007. So from our best evidence, they are now. If, when the applicant, when they, when they get to working in there, if they pull it off, we can see the framing and we can clearly see it's not an original opening, then, I mean, that happens. We do see that and we do permit changes or windows to be converted to doors or removed based on that evidence, so.
That's the reason for them to confer with you on windows, right? Right. More questions?
Melissa, I have a question for you. The, the approval with the condition that windows forward of the ridgeline, that's, would you say that's fairly common for the guy, for how the staff interprets guidelines and, and consistent with past commission decisions?
Yeah, it's the, the general feedback that's, that's given. And I think with this one, especially the right side in particular, like the concern was there are so many openings being removed and changed. I mean, even with our recommendation, you've got, the rear half is mostly windowless, but there, you know, there's been flexibility with that, so.
I'm glad to say that because in my, in my recollection, this is pretty, pretty typical for what we've, the, how we've held other property owners and applicants to guidelines when it comes to partial demolition with addition of doors and windows. And in this case, I think it's also pretty generous that we're approving the, the changes to the front entrances considering they're also historic, which is sometimes not always what we have done as a commission. So I think in this case it can be okay. I also find that the, the large blank wall here on the right, on the right elevation along the ground floor is pretty unusual for something that the staff would recommend approving. So I feel like there's been a lot of compromise in this staff decision. And it's something that I'd like to hear other commissioners' opinions on, but I believe I can, I can get behind it.
I don't know if this would be, it's not in the guidelines, but certainly it's a technique that has been used. Parents bought a historic home and, and before it was in the district, but used, you know, bought an ice or storm window to deal with some of the air infiltration issues that you might find in a historic home and as we like tighter houses nowadays. And so I think there are others, I feel like there are other solutions if the windows are operable and in a scenario where they could be kept, that the financial burden, that, that argument, I get it, but at the same time, the kind of leeway that, that is given here, and I'm a light guy, so sorry. I had, I would find it less desirable to live in a house with a dearth of windows as opposed to the other. But I'm not living in this house and nobody asks. But I, I appreciate Commissioner Price's comments and I think it would be not only unusual, it would not be something that I think this, not be findings of this, consistent with this commission if we did not more closely review the front half of the building and then require openings, especially existing openings on a historic asset.
You know, we see a lot of these and, and it's, it's nice to see a house that's not getting tremendously bigger and that's, that's respecting what's there. And I think the staff has been very generous, the, the front openings to be changed. I think one of the conditions, to me, if you have a brick infill below the window, then the sill should be removed and the brick go to the floor underneath those windows. It sounds like that's something that, that would be appropriate. I do think that this is a very long expanse of, of wall with no windows in it, which has not been our typical tendency to approve. But I think the staff's recommendation to look only at the front half of the building beyond the ridge point is appropriate. So to me, I'm good with staff recommendations and the, and where we are with this project.
Thank you, commissioners.
One, one more thing I would ask of, of the applicant, and I don't know how much you've paid attention to our previous, more recent, but throughout history, our deliberations. We often find that if applications aren't clear as to exactly where you arrive, it, it can lead to conflict and maybe undesirably appearing before us. So I would encourage that what is what you want to build and what we find today is, is what's in the application. It saves, save you a lot of headaches and I think save the staff from having to make it more easy to review. Would be a recommendation that, I mean, that's stating the obvious, but I would encourage that to occur, that they, it'd be very specific in, in the final drawings and they reflect what will be built.
So I'll go ahead and, and I'll go ahead and make a motion then that with respect to 947 Mansfield Street, I move for approval with staff conditions with two caveats. Number one, that, that the sills be taken out underneath the front doors to be removed and that the applicant work with the staff for the windows so that if there is evidence of prior windows, if there are other solutions, if there are changes to what's on these drawings, that they work closely with staff to really coordinate those efforts and get staff approval prior to moving ahead with, with any window selections.
Thank you, vice chair. Is there a motion second? Second by Commissioner Cashin? Ready to make a motion to approve the motion? All right, all in favor? Okay, I thought you all were asleep on me. Any, any opposed? Okay, none opposed and that motion passes. Legal, were you looking at me for something? You want to make sure we close public hearing?
I just wanted to make sure that you asked for all opposed because I wasn't clear.
I'm sorry, say that.
I just wanted to make sure you asked of any opposed because I couldn't tell if everyone had spoken.
Yes, I did not hear or see any opposed, so that motion did pass. Thank you.
I didn't, I promise.
It's okay, it's okay. All right.
This next one is 2901 Belmont. It was pulled off consent, so I'll just give a brief overview of it. The house is a circa 1914 bungalow style house that contributes to the historic character of the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. An administrative permit was issued for demolition of the existing outbuilding in the rear yard in December. And the Metro Historic Zoning Commission approved in addition to the historic house in December as well. A preservation permit for that has already been issued. This application is for an outbuilding in the rear yard. These are the elevations for that proposed outbuilding. Staff finds that the outbuilding meets all of the design guidelines. And then this is the site plan for the outbuilding. The outbuildings there to the bottom left corner of the screen. Staff finds that it meets the design guidelines as well. I spoke with the neighbor who pulled it from consent and it seems that his concern is mainly about not the outbuilding itself, but about this rear wall along the alley. He would like to ask the applicant to preserve that wall. Of course, walls and fences are not in our purview in this overlay, not something we would review here. But he did want to get that on the record and speak with the applicant and ask him to preserve that stone wall. That, or the neighbor is here as well, so I will let him speak. If he has any other concerns, happy to answer any questions. But that's generally, I think, why it was pulled.
Thank you.
Oh, and I didn't say, but we're recommending approval, obviously, with those conditions. They're just our standard conditions, so that it was on consent, but.
Great. Thank you, Joseph, for clarification.
Yes.
Is this the applicant? Oh, okay, we haven't opened up a public hearing yet. Sorry, Joseph, you led into that, so I want to make sure. Thank you for catching that. So the applicant is here. Yes, we see him walking. Thank you, sir.
Thought we might have switched it up a little bit. Michael Ward, Allard Ward Architects. Happy to be here to represent this de due for 2901 Belmont Boulevard. The site plan makes it clear, we're talking about the same wall we talked about back in December. We're still not doing anything different to the wall. We probably have to cut off about three feet on one side. It's been tuck pointed and it's well-constructed. We don't want to mess with the wall. So what we've proposed here is frankly no different than what you looked at before in terms of site-related stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we've opened public Thank you. Okay, now we've opened public hearing, and we will be happy to hear you.
I'm Joseph Johnston. My wife and I live at 2815 Belmont Boulevard, directly across Cedar Lane from this house. This wall that has just been described is also included in the handout that we have given. And the reason that I came here today was a question that was raised by the new drawing for the additional addition. The original drawing, it was considered in December of last year, referred to the wall as a two-foot wall, and it was represented at that time that there was a plan to preserve the wall. But the new plan does not indicate what's happening to the wall at all. It doesn't have any kind of designation as to its size. And so because of that omission, it may have just been a drafting error, but I wanted to come down and establish for the record that the wall was going to be preserved according to the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think we heard the applicant say that they will not touch that wall. Oh, they're trimming it, but you said you won't remove the wall. Yeah. Do you have any rebuttal to that?
The two-foot refers to the thickness of the wall, not the height of the wall.
You had a chance to rebut, so.
Hopefully that was clarified last time. The two-foot is the thickness of the walls, a two-foot thick double stone wall. It varies in height a good bit from one end of the property to the other. It's shorter on the driveway side than it is on the corner side. And we may have to remove three, four feet of it for the parking to work on that side, but we're taking off the short side. But the wall is in great condition. We're not doing it, we're not putting extra notes on this soot middle, so I apologize for not including the note from before. Thank you.
Thank you again. Just want to be clear. Okay. We continue to have public hearing. I just had a little moment, Foggy. Anyone else to speak on this? Otherwise, we will close public hearing. Okay?
Madam Chairman, since we seem to have everything resolved here, I'll go ahead and make a motion that with respect to 2901 Belmont Boulevard, we approve it with staff conditions.
So motion by Vice Chair? Second by Commissioner Cotton. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you again. Okay. What's under our other business? It, okay. Commissioner? Right, yes. Commissioner, can we be okay with 10 minutes? Okay, 10 minutes, good. Let's just give ourselves a break. Okay, 10 minutes, thank you. Somebody clock us on that 10-minute mark? On the clock?
On the clock.
On the clock, please. 10 minutes, thank you. We have to have a break anyway. And on our agenda is the resolution proposal, and there's a, I'm gonna anticipate quite a bit of discussion on this and actually encourage it. Let me just give you a couple things that because this is an open meeting, truly, this is the only opportunity for our commission to openly discuss this resolution and voice our concerns. I think some of this timeline, and we'll get to that, is due to how council will have a hearing. So there's lots of moving parts to this particular issue or matter. So again, I just want to have our commissioners really in tune with, if you have comments, you have concerns. There's a lot of press that's been going around, perhaps misinformation, perhaps not, but I think Councilmember Kupin had mentioned about Connect Council. If public, if you all hear that, there's a lot of chatter in that. I do want to acknowledge that Councilmember Benedict is here. I don't know how we, our protocol is on that legal, if that, she could just talk, if she had comments on a public hearing.
Of course, the commission can choose to hear from her and to have public hearings.
Okay. Sure. And we just wanted to have Councilor Kersey on that. Right. So I think, and there's some things that may come up, and again, I think I'm gonna hold off on the protocols of how they, how council's gonna be hearing this, but Commissioner Price, we respectfully bow to you on how you want to present this to us.
Sure. As we all know, this commission has been in the news a lot lately and discussed on the floor of Metro Council. It's all, the discussion and proposals about how to, what to do with us has happened very fast. And because of, we only meet once a month, this is the first opportunity we, I have to address what's been in the public. I find that I have a lot of thoughts about this, and I wrote them all down as a statement presentation today. I drafted a draft of a resolution, but I, it's certainly not anything that I believe is set in stone, and I'm open to further feedback and changes to it. I do feel like it's our responsibility as the Metro Historic Zoning Commission to respond in some way to everything that's been going on. So with that said, I'll just, I'm gonna read what I've written, and we'll go from there. Does that sound good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In late January, the mayor's office, in collaboration with Metro Planning and Codes, released a report titled Metro Nashville and Davison County Historic Zoning Review, written by the Brentwood office of the consulting firm HDR Incorporated. This report claims to be an authoritative review of the administration and management of the Metro Historical Commission, and particularly its sibling agency, the Metro Historic Zoning Commission, who we represent today. After vague and misleading introductory remarks.
Sorry about that.
After vague and misleading introductory remarks about supposed citywide planning disputes over the management of our historic preservation and conservation overlay districts, HDR wrote that it was actually hired to address just two districts in one discrete area of downtown Nashville, Broadway and Second Avenue, and collected no information from any other historic or conservation overlay districts. Yet, through its flawed analysis, HDR claims that there are systemic flaws in the city's entire historic zoning overlay system. It recommends that the MHC and MHZC, who, for purposes of brevity, I'll just call Metro Historic, that their 50-plus-year histories as independent metro agencies is not the best model going forward, and that they should be reorganized under planning to streamline that agency's development-related priorities. I've prepared this response to state that HDR's report is a deeply flawed and professionally negligent hit piece orchestrated against the MHC and MHZC. Due to its many flaws, from its research methods and analysis to its conclusions, this report should never have been released and should not be used to shape Nashville's public planning policy. Its release has only fueled a continued swirl of misinformation and lies in the media, and now at Metro Council, about this body's mission, policy, and practice. If its main recommendation to move the staffs of Metro Historic under planning is rushed through Metro Council, I believe it has the enormous potential to harm the strongest protections we have for historic properties in Nashville, and lead to more demolition of historic buildings, more damaging renovations and inappropriate development in our overlays, and harm the quality of life enjoyed by Nashville residents. The report was written by a team of authors at HDR who have zero professional qualifications. who have zero professional qualifications or experience with historic preservation planning. All of the report's flaws stem from HDR's lack of credentials. So why was HDR chosen in the first place? HDR is a planning, engineering, and construction firm that has an on-call contract to manage the East Bank redevelopment project in Nashville. So they were a convenient call for this report. They were selected not because they have qualified credentials, but because they have an existing metro contract, so the study didn't have to be competitively bid out among the many firms with actual experience in historic preservation planning. None of the authors have background or experience in historic preservation planning. This is ironic because HDR does have trained historic preservationists and architectural historians on its staff nationwide, but none of them were involved in composing or reviewing this report. The report contains no historic context to explain why the MHC and MHZC were established in the first place as independent agencies. They were founded in 1966 and 1977 respectively and came on the heels of the destruction caused by urban renewal, interstate construction, and depopulation of the city that destroyed huge swaths of downtown Nashville: the Public Square, Dedrick Street, Union Street, almost the Ryman Auditorium, and surrounding pre-World War II-era neighborhoods. The agencies were created as a result of grassroots citizen-led historic preservation efforts and were intended to be independent from the planning department all along, to act as a check and balance on economic and political forces that had led to so much destruction. In particular, the MHZC's organization and 48-year history as an independent agency offers the single greatest protection for Nashville's historic properties. Every one of our nine historic preservation zoning overlays, including Broadway and Second Avenue, and all 26 neighborhood conservation overlays, and our 71 historic landmarks are the results of grassroots efforts by regular Nashvillians to preserve our history. Many of these overlays have been expanded once or even twice because more property owners wanted to be included. To undo this long and successful history of preservation by means of a shoddy consultant report and a bill rushed through Council is a mistake, in my opinion. The report's research methods, analysis, and conclusions are so flawed it's almost laughable for a public policy document of this significance. The authors rely exclusively on a limited set of interviews with 23 people as their sole dataset, which is heavily biased toward downtown interests. The interviewees include a handful of current and former zoning commission commissioners and staff, planning and code staff, and property owners and attorneys associated with Broadway and Second Avenue. But it also includes several people who are not stakeholders in the discussion, including four members of the Fire Department and two representatives of a local sign company. So roughly a quarter of the interview participants are not directly related to the discussion. Now let's look at a long list of obvious interview choices who were not included in the report. Of the participants interviewed, the interests of only two out of Nashville's 35 historic and conservation overlay districts are represented: a small fraction of the almost 11,500 properties, plus 300 more potentially, protected by overlays; not a single current or former Metro Council member with historic overlays in their district or who personally led efforts to get overlays in place was interviewed; nobody from any of our longstanding and active historic neighborhood associations, the very people who petition us regularly for new preservation overlays, was interviewed; not a single current or former resident applicant, or architect, or designer, or builder was interviewed; nobody from Nashville's oldest historic preservation advocacy group, Historic Nashville, Inc., was interviewed; nobody from the city's newest preservation advocacy group, the Preservation Society of Nashville, was interviewed; none of our many outstanding Metro Historical Commission preservation award winners were interviewed: residents, property owners, architects, people who are proud of their historic renovations to their homes and businesses and happy for the support and expertise provided by Metro Historic; none of the many applicants who have had positive and rewarding interactions with our staff or decisions as a commission was interviewed. The results of this report is obvious to anyone reading it. It is intended to artificially inflate the narrow interests of downtown property owners across the entire city at the expense of Nashville residents. The set of interviews is presented as a pile of anecdotal he-said-she-said statements dressed up as rigorous analysis. The authors could not be bothered to actually verify many of the claims made against the Historic Zoning Commission, they just accepted and presented them as fact. In one place, the report states that the department doesn't encourage adaptive reuse projects. This ignores the scores of award-winning adaptive reuse projects that have been completed over the past 50 years with the department's help and encouragement. The report leans heavily on a comparison of Nashville with many, with other cities, which is not helpful because many of them are in other states and subject to different state-enabling laws. And no analysis is offered considering whether actually having an independent Metro Historic is actually a better model than those where historic preservation is folded into planning departments. The report echoes common misunderstandings of historic overlay zoning and design guidelines, which I see repeated again and again in the media when it comes to Nashville challenges around growth and housing development. This includes two columns in the Nashville scene published just this week that push misleading arguments that historic zoning overlays prevent new housing and development by controlling property use and unit density, which is fundamentally untrue. "The Planning Commission and the Planning Department work with Council to shape land use and density through base zoning, not the Metro Historic Zoning Commission." "Our commission applies design guidelines and historic overlay districts on top of base zoning, hence the term overlay." "Our commission works all the time with whatever base zoning is in play." "In my six years on this commission, we've approved dozens of plans for all kinds of base zoning, from single-family to duplex and triplex, multifamily and mixed-use developments, many specific plan or SP projects. In my neighborhood alone, which is a neighborhood conservation overlay, I've watched multiple new projects this year that are adding missing middle housing amongst historic single-family lots." "In our case, in all cases, our job is to ensure good design that is compatible with its historic context, no matter the base zoning or the number of units that are involved." "This criticism of the department is paired in the report and in the media with poorly reported columns that the MHZC is somehow too rigid in its enforcement of the guidelines. This reflects another fundamental misunderstanding of how the guidelines work and our role, our roles as commissioners, to consider the precedents that we set, to address the individual realities of specific sites while trying to treat all applicants fairly. The media consistently cherry-picks the cases they cover and who they talk to, usually applicants who ask for permission to build projects that are clearly not allowed by the plain text of the guidelines, which is a sliver, less than 5% of all applicants that we see. And those unfortunate property owners whose builders did not follow approved plans and were made to correct their projects. These stories get posted on social media, designed to outrage, and the chaos of misinformation swirls. Reporters rarely, if ever, balance their reporting by talking to any of the 65% of pleased applicants whose projects are administratively approved every month, or the additional 30% who are approved every month in person before this commission." "The HDR report contains no acknowledgement or discussion of how the Historic Zoning Commission has evolved in recent years in response to neighborhood interests, like the lengthy guideline consolidation process, which every neighborhood with an overlay was invited to participate in multiple community meetings, and, as the department is in the process of doing right now in Lachlan Springs and East End. There was no mention of the department leading the way on the approval of detached accessory dwelling units to create additional living units; no mention of the fact that the department pioneered the creation of conservation overlay zoning as a less restrictive alternative to traditional historic zoning." Sorry, I'm going on, I'm almost done. This brings me to maybe the most negligent aspect of this report. "After Metro Historic staff reviewed the initial draft, they called out its many flaws, and inexcusably, their responses and corrections were excluded from the final draft. This, in my opinion, is a violation of basic professional practice for a public policy study like this. It may even violate the planning department's own code of ethics as set by the American Institute of Certified Planners, the AICP, which state that a firm should not accept assignment beyond its professional competence; that a firm should not work under pressure to reach findings that are not supported by available evidence; and should not participate in an effort to conceal the true interests of its clients." And now, the bewildering and unfortunate result of this report is a bill currently before Metro Council to reorganize both Metro Historical Commission and the Metro Historic Zoning Commission under the Planning Department. Nowhere in the bill or other public discourse from its sponsor, respectfully, Councilperson Benedict, does it explain how the goal to streamline the permitting process will work in practice, or how it will solve conflicts with historic overlay zoning downtown or anywhere else in the city. If, as the bill says, historic staff is staying in place, if the overlays and guidelines are staying in place, and the bill just reorganizes agencies under planning, how exactly does that solve anything? This question has not been answered. As for ongoing issues with the overlays on Broadway and Second Avenue and the possibility of state preemption on that matter, the first and best course of action should be to reform or dissolve those overlays, not to use them as excuses to imply that the entire historic zoning overlay system is flawed. If there are other complaints about the design guidelines or the need for the Historic Zoning Commission to work more closely with planning, let's have a conversation about common sense solutions. These agencies have been independent for over 50 years, and most people in the city, including the over 11,000 property owners with overlay protections, most property owners are satisfied with how they're managed. It does not help that there continues to be misrepresented facts about the MHC cases on Council Connect and in the council members' public statements, including slander of our staff on the Metro Council floor as happened this Tuesday night. Tim Walker and Robin Ziegler have the receipts on what actually happened in all of the cases that have been mentioned by the bill sponsor and shared them with us via email this morning. Safe to say, they did not, this stuff did not happen how it's been publicly characterized. My fear is that this bill is not actually about enhancing or streamlining how departments operate, but political retribution to bring the Metro Historical Commission to heel. Bottom line, this bill will make Metro Historic staff subordinate to planning so that staff can potentially be pressured to toe the official line and fired if they don't. The result will be that Metro Historic staff will lose their independence and could be pressured to approve projects that adversely affect historic properties. Staff and commissioners could face pressure to relax enforcement of design guidelines, leading to more demolition, damaging renovations, and inappropriate development in overlays that residents have worked so hard to put into place. In conclusion, I urge my fellow commissioners, Nashville residents, the mayor's office, and Metro Council to reject HDR's report and recommendations. And I urge the Metro Council to find better solutions to problems with downtown overlays that do not involve weakening our strongest protections for historic resources. Thank you, and I'm done.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Let's give ourselves a moment to just have a little bit of space with that. So all of you have read the resolution? Thank you, Vice Chair. So as commissioners have read the resolution presented by Commissioner Price, I think I heard you say it's not written in stone, it could have some...
Yeah, and in fact, an alternate version of it has been submitted as well.
Legal, is that appropriate to discuss?
Yes, of course, it's been distributed to the commission, you can consider both of them.
Shall we present that now?
Sure.
Courtesy to you.
I don't, I only have one copy of it right here.
Okay. I think we have a copy, I have lost my side of it. And who, would you like to, who, who wants to, do you wanna...
I believe it was provided by Councilman Stewart, but would you like me to read it, or...
I, I, do, do all of you, I think all of us have a copy of it.
I also wanna open the floor, I've been thinking about this stuff for two weeks and it's like, my wife's about to kick me out of the house.
Understood.
If anyone else has any other thoughts or reaction, you wanna drive me out of, off the board, whatever, let me know, please, I open the floor for discussion.
Oh, for us or for...
This is commissioners, legal, are we opening public hearings?
That's a decision for the commission, if you'd like to open a public hearing, you could, you could do that.
I'm not okay with that right now.
We can open public hearing if we, if as a commission, we choose and vote to do that.
Can we have a discussion first?
Is that what you all want? I'm listening.
Do it the other way?
Typically. Yes, and then we do a discussion. I think we should stay on track with that. Are you good with that, Commissioner? Okay, because we might hear some. So again, this is a very unusual case that we do this. This is the first time in my 20-something years that this has happened. So I've been on the commission since 2001, respectfully. So let's open public hearing and you have two minutes?
Two minutes, don't we do it?
Two minutes.
Listen, Michael, do we need a motion to open?
Yes, we will.
Why don't you go ahead and just have a motion?
A motion to open public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing.
Okay, Commissioner Mosley, second by Commissioner May Hall. All in favor? Okay, any opposed? Seeing none, this motion passes. We will hear public hearing.
Michael Ward, Alabot Architects, I never first, I never wanna be first, but I was supposed to have been somewhere 20 minutes ago.
And we thank you.
So I was happy to stay and called a few people. This has been upsetting for me too. We've been working in these districts for years. Our work, I have a huge body of work in all these neighborhoods and you guys have collaborated with us for so long. I think I may have done the first infill 20-something years ago in the Richland neighborhood. We had two on the agenda today, we had a couple that were staff-approved that no one ever talked about, so probably four projects since this month. And that's not an unusual month for my firm. And they're all different sizes, big ones, little ones, garages, whatever, we do different things. The untruths are evident to any of us who do this, who pay any attention to what goes on with this body. And I appreciate all the work you guys do. This is a real insult to you guys, it tears my heart out, it's a huge insult to staff. We work with staff almost every day, in some form or another. 907 Gilmore, which was on the agenda today when I was on consent, you know, we've been talking to staff about it, these perimeter roof lines are incredibly complex. We had some differences of opinion within less than 24 hours. Jenny and Melissa and I sat down, we worked it out, we made our submission for this project. And we have a very happy client. I cannot work with other metro departments and make these sorts of changes and get these things and stay on my schedules. When you're carrying costs on a big project like that, that is important. There's so many different scale things that we do. It was only a few months ago you guys worked with us on a seven-unit, 12,000-square-foot project across the street from my office for a short-term rental unit on a OM20 zone. That's a huge project, we worked incredibly close with staff on that. These are complex things, thank you very much.
We wish you could talk more. Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Good afternoon, Chair Bell, Commissioners and HCC staff. I'm here to thank you for all you do to protect Nashville's special...
Did you give your name, please?
My name is Matt Reeser, and I'm the co-chairman of Richland-Weston's Historic Zoning Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you've done to protect Nashville's special character, our valuable architectural heritage. And at this time, we are at risk of losing both. The pace and volume of our city's growth is a huge challenge that requires strategic, thoughtful planning so we can address housing, transit, and overall infrastructure issues effectively. Your independence, authority, and not... Your independence, authority, and knowledge about historic preservation provides important leverage against the momentum of unchecked development, so we can remain a city that we recognize and love. Not surprisingly, I'm here to speak out against BL 2025-742, which will have its second reading at Metro Council's March 4 meeting. If that bill were to pass, and the Historic Preservation Department were to be absorbed into the Planning Department, you would risk becoming a commission in name only. That would be a travesty, because neighborhood conservation overlays cover only six percent of the land and twelve percent of the parcels in Nashville. This commission punches well above its weight class, driving through Nashville's historic neighborhoods is proof of your positive impact. As an individual, I appreciate your work, I'm also co-chair of the Richland-West End Neighborhoods Historic Preservation and Zoning Committee, our experience with HCC has been quite positive. We worked with HCC's staff for eighteen months to update our design guidelines, if historic was part of the Planning Department, it's unlikely we would have received the time and expert advice that led to a trusted relationship and successful outcome. Also, over the past few years, two homeowners were required by this commission to rectify violations, in both instances, the violations were self-induced. If they had gotten required framing inspections, their errors would have been identified. Those situations were evidence of you doing your job, not being difficult or unreasonable. Ruina has sent a letter to council opposing BL 2025-742, we will appear in person on March 4 to support an independent, active historic preservation department and strong HCC commission. Thank you all for protecting Nashville's character and heritage.
We thank Ruina, I believe that's that, okay?
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Emily Benedict, first, commissioners, I want you to know how much I value your work, you have had an important role in our city, and my goal is for you to continue to have that. I don't want to talk about the merits of my bill at this moment, I appreciate hearing from you, I'm here to listen, I've been listening to many stakeholders in the community, and I'm going to continue to do that, and so I just, I wanted to express that to you and let you know. The other thing that, and thank you for the courtesy of offering for me to speak earlier, at the next council meeting, and this is on Council Connect, at the next council meeting, I will be moving for a public hearing, so I want everybody who's watching and listening to know that's going to happen, I believe my colleagues will pass that unanimously, and that would be for a date certain, March 18, at council. That is a public hearing, much like a zoning hearing where there's two minutes to share, no limit to the number of speakers, so, thank you for your work, it is very much appreciated, staff as well as the commissioners, thank you.
Thank you. If you are going to leave now, but if wanted to listen, we, okay, we're good, we do thank you for being here, we know that there's been a lot of information going out, and it's just good to have some clarity in this chaos. Open public hearing, is anyone else would like to speak, want to make sure there's anyone else, okay? I will close public hearing, and more discussion from Commissioner Price's proposal.
Here's my question, I have a lot to say, but I think what I have to say will be affected by discussion or introduction of the substitute resolution.
Okay.
So I don't know how to...
Ask your question first, and then we'll get there.
Oh, I don't have a question, I've got a...
Punch?
Yeah.
Say it.
I've got a spiel.
Go, you have the mic.
Oh, I'm so sorry, but at least we had a break. I kind of want to take a little different tact and not focus on the report itself as much, and I want to start by saying, you know, as one of the people who really didn't know all this was happening when the report came out, I read it like all the rest of us, and it's always difficult to read when people say things that aren't flattering about us as a commission, but honestly, the thing that troubled me the most was the discussion about staff. I think we have an incredible staff who have a very, very difficult job, we're up here because we're volunteers, we're passionate, I suppose, about historic preservation, or we wouldn't put ourselves through this, but Robin and the staff members have chosen as their career, their passion, and so I just want to recognize the difficulty that I can only imagine the staff has been through in the last few weeks, in reading this, in absorbing this, and I just want to say again, and I think, I don't really even have to say it, because month after month, when people come up here, applicants, even ones that don't agree with us, they compliment our staff, and they say, you know, we really appreciate them helping us get to where we are, and so I just want to acknowledge and thank the staff once again for their incredible work, and I think it's really easy sometimes for the media and for all of us to throw a word like "the staff" around, but you guys are people. Yeah, and I want to recognize that, and so, anyway, sorry, ugh, I appreciate you, it's an honor to work with you, you've taught me so much, thank you. Moving on, before I get more emotional about that, I had the opportunity to go to a historic preservation seminar this summer with Commissioner May Hall, and Commissioner Stewart spoke. It was fantastic, if you ever have the opportunity to go, go, I learned so much. One of the things I learned is there are cities with commissions without staffs, can you imagine if we had to do all the work that they do as a volunteer, I just, I can't, I probably wouldn't, but that's not what this is about, I think, one of the main things I took away from that is, you can't do historic preservation in a vacuum. As a department, we can't do it alone, I hate, it just grieves my heart when we get into these situations that have happened several times since the past few years, where the historic preservation community kind of seems to turn on each other, I really don't want to see that happen here. It takes a well-functioning historic preservation department to effect effective historic preservation, but it also takes the support of groups like Historic Nashville, the Preservation Society, support from the mayor, I think we're so fortunate to have a mayor who understands historic preservation. We work with council, we work with these council members, it's part of what we do, we have to, we don't always get along, but we try, and we work with our other departments, including planning. So I guess what I'm saying is, and my problem with the original resolution, I don't want us to go down a road where we are participating in any name-calling, or participating in, not that I'm saying that it does, but I just, I want us to be really clear, one of the things that bothered me most in that report, it said that we're hard to work with and that we're rigid, I don't think we are, and I don't want us to be that, I don't want our response to be so harsh that it prevents us from continuing to work well with our stakeholders, that's my biggest concern in putting forth any type of resolution. I have huge concerns and worries about what's happening, of course, I mean, I think we all do, right, because I don't know what's going on, I mean, most of what I've learned, I've learned from the media and the internet, that's never good, that's never good, there's a lot of misinformation flying around. So I feel like I'm not in a place where I even understand what is happening, what potentially could happen, the benefits, the drawbacks, all of that, right, I mean, like, I'm not there yet, so like, to jump full forward, you know, full force into, this is going to be a nuclear disaster if this happens, I'm just not ready to go there, I guess. So I would love to be more informed, I've not heard, it's not true, I heard the mayor on a podcast yesterday, but does that really count? I haven't heard from the Planning Department. I don't know, I just feel like I don't have a lot of information, and I'm on the Historic Zoning Commission, and that's problematic too, I think. I also understand the literal elephant in the room that no one's talking about, and why this is so fast-tracked, I get it. Is that for me to figure out? I don't know that it is, but, I don't know, I, I just need more information, I'm not supportive of the resolution as it reads originally, I'm not, that's why I said I would be open to hearing Commissioner Stewart's, but I think it is, I just don't want us to go down that road as a commission and alienate the people that we have to work with to do good work here, and, again, it takes a strong commission, it takes a strong staff, it takes a strong mayor, it takes a strong council, it takes good relationships with the development community, it takes strong support organizations, and I just want us to be careful not to jump off a cliff yet when we don't know, I don't know where this is headed. But I also want to say I appreciate bringing a resolution forward so we can have this discussion.
That's right. Yep, I think that's, I'm just going to jump in for just a second, because I think it has, this has given us, as a commission, an opportunity to have an open discussion, because we can't do that behind the doors, we have to have an open meeting, and this is why it's important for us to say yay, or haven't, but I really do appreciate it as a constituent of District 19, to have an opportunity to do that, and appreciate that Councilmember Benedict has said she will make the motion to have a public hearing. I think one of my concerns was that there wasn't the opportunity for other council members who have constituents under their overlays, we have thirty-plus overlays, and is there a moment of pause to do that? I don't know council's protocols and how, if they have their committees, that's not our purview, that's why they're hired to do that, but since other council members, we have two here that are listening, is to say, we would like, we thank you for the public hearing, and however that pans out, because that is the democratic way to do things, and a way for people to voice, and I appreciate that Council Commissioner Cotton has said, this is, you know, so I think we're a member that can agree to disagree in some things, we don't have a blanket to say, you know, we've always said this, we look at projects in specific, and we try to work with the applicant to make it work, we're not uncaring, I've heard commissioners express how they sympathize with an applicant, you know, the other thing about us being volunteer commission, and I do take that a little personally, because of all the hours that our commission puts in, and I know Planning Commission does as well, but we are a volunteer group, and the time that we put in, and the preservationists that you are, and the professionalism that you have is exemplary, and to have this, I feel, the attack doesn't feel good, and hopefully you all will hear that public, because we do our very, very best when we come to this meeting to review a project, get it for a recommendation, then we look at it, and we see again where it works, and I think part of that is also holding the line for preservation and the design guidelines, that's our purview. Honestly, Planning Department, that's not their purview, they have a bit more leeway to do what they need to do for development and all of that, but as a Metro Historic Zoning Commission, we want to hold as much compliance as we can and do it in a thoughtful way, and I think we've done that, so to have this feeling of attack and hostility is not appropriate, and, the other thing too, where we probably, probably need to bring it out, because we've got public hearing, and we, there is something in the state legislation that has come up, which was also noted in press releases, and it has to do with the tourism development zone, and there is a bill, SB 0340, that is before the General Assembly in the state, I want to read it, which I think has some bearing to how this is all evolving. Okay, well then we're going to talk about that elephant in the room. So it actually looks like to me, I looked it up online, and it did pass on second consideration, refer to Senate State and Local Government Committee, okay? So the zoning as introduced specifies that a privately-owned property built after 1899 that is located in a tourism development zone is not subject to the authority of a Historic Zoning Commission or Historic Zoning Law, Rule, Review, Guideline, or Regulation with respect to certain aspects of a project. Sync that in a minute. How does that protect, and we're going to say this, because the HDR refers to it, the press refers to it, that it's downtown, you know that what has come before our committee in the past has been these back-and-forth with the downtown owners, and this legislation is being pushed by that group. Let's consider it, and let's have a conversation if that is what it is, and, again, not knowing where that is at this moment, because that's up to the powers that be, but this legislation is pretty important, and how, wave your hands, raise your hand, and how this legislation affects where we are today. With the bill, I don't know, we don't know that, and I know as Commissioner has said, there's a lot of details that may be in the background, but, you know, those of us who are Chair of the Metro Historic Commission separately, in their, in, you know, us here as Vice Chair and zoning and Chair, that we're looking at this to say, how do we, where do we go from here, is a very good question, so, yes, there's this legislation, yes, there's this BL 2025-742, what is that driving, is that driving it? And we need some clarity about that, maybe from council, they may have more intel than we do, maybe there's, that's the push, maybe that's part of the mayor's office, to disclose that we had a meeting with the mayor the end of January, just saying, to have our opinions brought up about the HDR report, and how other things could be affecting, so, it's been very disconcerting to me, how these things can be... how these things can be pushed through. And again, I'm, I'm, that's a hopeful thing that council will have other council members to discuss their own constituents and their own overlays to see how that's going to affect the implementation and the processing of how that would work in Planning Department. How does that work? Let's just have a scenario. And I want to ask you as commissioners, that bill, the 2025-742 is, at this moment, says moving the entire department into planning. Think about that. Have your opinions about it because that's significant in terms of how preservation has moved in this city for fifty years. How's that going to affect? Also, you know, MHC is not a regulatory board like we are. The MHC was created in 1966 as a standalone agency. Is that, is that a consideration? I'm pu, I'm pushing that, that question out because, you know, we're in zoning. And then zoning was brought in in 1977. We'd been under the umbrella of the MHC, but that is, we have different roles. What we look at, our projects, our, our staff, they're specific, they're distinct. And I have an issue with bringing all of that department in. Not say, you know, there must be some other conversation, but to have that as a blanket to say the whole department goes into planning, there needs to be more conversation and more detail about it. I'm on the soapbox.
And there needs to be a lot more studies done, a lot more studies. This is, this is inadequate, in my opinion, to make that decision.
So in my role in this commission and having practiced architecture here for fifty years and getting to know the players, I'm a founding board member of the Preservation Society of Nashville. And for a number of years, I've been active on the American Institute of Architects advocacy group that works with the state legislature, working to enact state hack, state tax credit. Uh, we weren't able to get that, but we did get a grant program that lasted for a while. So so I have a number of people that I talked to and I've been able to be part of several conversations about this. And I have not talked to anybody that thinks that the report done by HDR was a professional valid report with with balanced investigation into, into all these issues. I have not talked to anybody that thinks that the process that we're at today was done in a timely, open, transparent process and that the timing is appropriate and that it needs more study. Even the HDR report said, and along with this recommendation that historic be moved under planning, that it needed more study and evaluation. However, that said, my friends that have friends on the Hill, there are two bills before the state legislature. One of those is the bill you referenced, the Tourism Development Zone, that bill that you referenced. The Tourism Development Zone includes all of downtown CBD and includes Capitol Hill, includes Prenner's Alley, it includes, you know, and goes all the way through Sobro and then it goes between West End and Charlotte all the way out to 440. This removes all oversight as the bill is written today and that's the way the bill was introduced. Now, as you know, bills get modified, they get amended, they get changed. And it terrifies me to think about what could happen with this bill as it moves through the General Assembly. And that happens quickly. You know, that happens between now and April. We, we don't have much time for that. The, the other bill's a caption bill that looks pretty innocuous today, but the caption bills can go anywhere. And it is before the state Assembly now, the General Assembly. And that's one that's probably more terrifying than this one because we don't know what's in it. So in, in the people that I've talked with, the leadership that I've talked to, they, and, and, and the people that know the folks on the Hill, it's clear that those two bills are being driven by the same people that drove this study. And it's, it's the lower Broadway interest. Now, there have been several options that have been put out there. There have been several things talked about, about easing the standards, doing things. In my conversations with them, they said, and, and you won't believe this, having all the sessions we've had here, but they see historic preservation as their brand. And are terrified that outside money comes in and puts up, you know, thirty-story hotels on Lower Broad, that kind of thing. So they are not opposed to what we are. And Elizabeth, you probably share some of this, but, but they want to keep the historic preservation. Now, you know, they, they want some changes made, but they want to keep historic preservation. And the people that I talked to with AIA tell me that the people on the Hill, both these bills can go away if Metro takes action on a timely basis. And the action that is acceptable and required is passage of this bill. Now, everybody admits too, that the bill can be amended as it goes through Metro Council. And those amendments have to be vetted by everybody and pulled together. And so you know, I'm, I'm, I'm like Commissioner Cotton, I, I don't like to burn bridges and I like to keep working relationships, especially with people that we may be working with in the future. And so I've made some modifications to the original resolution that Commissioner Price, and I appreciate all the work and heart that you've put into this. And, and, and so I've made some modifications to that. And one of those modifications is to pull the Metro Historic Commission out of this. The, the whole discussion that's been about this report and about the challenges that have come up have been about the Historic Zoning Commission and its interaction with applicants. And Historic Commission itself has nothing to do with any of that. Historic Commission works to educate, to preserve historic documents, to research, to keep the story of Nashville alive and vibrant in the eyes of the citizens. So, so my, in my sense so far is that I don't think people would have objection to keeping MHC as a separate entity, autonomous entity. But that's, that's some of the information that, that I've been able to come up with. The, the problem, as I said, is timing. We don't have time to, you know, if, if we wait until April, May, June to deal with this, the General Assembly will have gone home by that time and the bill would be law.
So Vice Chair, what you're saying is that, just again, this bill under the state legislation is really much more broad and really serious and can have impact.
Yeah, the, the bill takes away historic oversight of the area of the tourist development zone, which is terrifying just to think of that. But going through the General Assembly, that same reduction of oversight could happen to a much, much broader swath of our states.
Of our state.
And, and we have heard from other preservation groups across the state that they are terrified of what could happen to other cities if Nashville doesn't take care of this. And they've asked that, that we in Nashville take care of this locally. And the, the word that we get from the Hill is that, you know, the sponsors of the bill on the Hill hope that we are able to take care of it locally so those bills can be withdrawn.
And if I can just add, I mean, that's the thrust of where I was coming from with my comments as well. I mean, that's, I don't have this the same connections as Commissioner Stewart. I have different ones, but I mean, that's the exact same thing I've been hearing from people who are on the Hill and I it terrifies me. So I just think we're in a horrible spot. We're literally between a rock and a hard place. So that was my, the thrust behind my, we have to
Because not the, not the whole pub, excuse me, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, the, this revision of this resolution, is there a specific that, that you're, because you're, what you're saying is you can see the department pull apart a bit. Metro Historic Commission does a standalone, Metro Historic Zoning Commission does what it needs to do to help this bill go away, basically. And to, and to appease, yes, the state legislation. And to appease downtown pressure, downtown Broadway with the group pressure. I just want to make, be really clear, this is what we're looking at. Because we needed to, we kind of need to weigh in from you commissioners today. Council's meeting in March, they got to keep moving. You know, so.
Additional couple of comments. I, I understand and I appreciate Cyril's information there about the state preemptive legislation. What drives me up the wall is that the question of how moving Metro Historic Zoning Commission and Metro Historical Commission under planning, how that solves any of Broadway's problems. It has not, the question has not been answered. And it shouldn't come as a surprise to anybody who's lived here for any amount of time that regular Nashville citizens are tired of Broadway, the tail wagging the dog for the rest of us. And that's what I feel like is happening right here. There has to be some sort of middle ground that deals with the issues that the Broadway Entertainment Association has, has brought up that does not involve, to use a cliche, throwing the baby out with the bathwater. So it, it just continues to irk me that this is the supposed solution to that problem because this is a, this is, in my opinion, a solution to a much what should be a small, manageable issue that we could solve as a city has morphed into something completely different. And, and that's what that's what, that's what bugs me so much.
Commissioner Stewart, my concern is, so say council votes to move our commissions under planning and planning and we both agree that there shouldn't be a twenty-story building on Broadway. What prevents the state from holding that over our head for the long term? I mean, the Broadway Entertainment Association could go back and say, we don't like this. Go ahead forward with your bill. That is, that's my concern. Do you share that concern?
I, um, I, I know that the General Assembly meets every year and council meets every two weeks. And so, so a lot can change as we go forward, but as, in the conversations I've been in and a lot of different alternative solutions have been thrown out, this is the only one that I have been told would satisfy the requirements.
The other thing I want to throw out too, you know, our Metro Historic, it's the, the whole commission, really. And I think that's been a hard way to say, okay, let's throw it all in, or maybe if we can salvage some part of it. Metro Historic Commission is meeting on Monday. Regular meeting. That is on their agenda as well. There'll be a conversation, well. I think for us is, is saying, how are you weighing in on, on this? I mean, really, if I don't hear from you, I'm going to call on you. So think about it. Because we either are this or this, or is there a this? You see what I'm saying? Hear, 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 hear.
Well, and the reality is, the powers that be do not have to explain why they're doing anything. They have a super majority.
You're talking about the state.
Yes. And so as irritated as that makes me on so many issues personally, here we are.
That's right.
I mean, here we are. And I, I don't, that's why I'm saying, I, I think we have to be super careful and strategic about who we yes, poke.
Right. We've been there before, right?
We have been there before. And I mean, I
The county's been there before.
Yes. And again, I think there are people who know things that we don't. I am not advocating for one thing or the other right now. I'm not advocating for this change necessarily.
Commissioner, we don't have much time.
Well, but I don't know. I mean, if that's how we have to do it, I, but do we?
So if we don't do anything,
I'm just throwing it out there.
If we don't do anything and the state legislation goes to fourth, we're out? We're out downtown.
But what I'm saying is
We're out of that conversation.
There's a whole mayor and council that also has to drive this.
They're listening to us.
I know they are. And I, thankfully, I hope they are.
Yeah.
And I think they are.
We're going to trust they are because they are our voted council members. They are voted in by their constituents. We're going to trust them that they're going to have a conversation. It's going to be in-depth and they're going to come and, and have some kind of, you know, decision. It's hard for them too. I, I could say.
I'm sure it is. And I mean, the mayor has to deal with this on so many different levels and so does the council. This is the one that impacts our staff.
And by the way, we don't get paid for this.
No, we don't.
I, I will say that I've talked to several council members. They believe in this and, and are as much interested in finding the right solution as any of us are.
Sure.
I mean, they, they're dedicated, committed, you know, longtime public servants. And I think it might be helpful if I read this.
Sure.
One, one of the things that I sort of practice in is that I'm rarely totally against things that I think have a pretty good opportunity of happening. So, so if I think something might happen, I try to be for it. I live a block from Montgomery Bell Academy and they did a major expansion a few years ago. And we had a number of our neighbors and absolutely not, absolutely not. Well, I felt the project was going to happen. So we worked with Montgomery Bell Academy. We got their board chairman, their architect in my living room with the proponents and the opponents of the project. And we were able to come up and they were generous enough to be able to put in some additional stop signs, to change some road realignments, to do some traffic calming things. So they did things as well as open up the campus to the neighborhood. And, and we were able to come up with a compromise that let them get what they needed, but also meant that we got something. If we would have just said no, none of that would have happened. And so one of the things I try to do is to try to keep the conversation going so that we can make the best of whatever situation we have. So why don't I go ahead and read this modified resolution and see, see what you think about that? And I think every, all of us have a hard copy of it. Metropolitan Historic Zoning Commission Resolution Challenging HDR Inc. Report and oppose, and calling for amendments to BL 2025-742, An Ordinance Amending Metro Code Pertaining to the Metropolitan Historical Commission and Metro Historic Zoning Commission. Whereas the Metro Historical Commission and Metro Historic Zoning Commission have successfully preserved and promoted Nashville's history and historic resources as independent agencies since 1966 and 1977 respectively. The first traditional historic preservation zoning overlay was Edgefield in 1978. The first neighborhood conservation zoning overlay, a tool most communities don't have because fewer actions are reviewed in this type of district, was Lachlan Springs East End in 1985. And additional tools that most communities don't have as well, including the historic B and B overlay, historic landmark signs, and historic landmark interior. Nashville now has nine historic preservation zoning overlays, twenty-six neighborhood conservation zoning overlays, seventy-one historic landmarks, and approximately seven historic B and Bs. And whereas historic districts have expanded as neighborhood property owners saw the value of the MHCC-administered districts and wished to be included. Bowling House District, Downtown Historic Overlay, Broadway, Edgefield, and Richland West End have expanded once. Those that have had more than one expansion include Hillsborough West End, Belmont Hillsborough, Eastwood, Lachlan Springs, East End, and Eastwood. Only one parcel, one parcel has been removed in forty-six years. And whereas the recent HDR report, Metropolitan Nashville and Davison County Historic Zoning Review, released January 23rd, 2025, was only addressed two discreet historic preservation overlays in downtown Nashville and collected no information from the other historic districts, but in but instead implied systemic flaws to the city's entire historic zoning overlay system. And whereas HDR report was written by a team of authors who lack professional credentials and qualifications in historic preservation planning, and multiple flaws in its research methods, analysis, and recommendations, including errors of fact and errors of omission, and excluded comments and corrections provided by the directors of the MHC and MHCC in violation of standard industry professional practice, focused entirely on actions of the MHCC and made no difference between the MHC and MHCC. And whereas the Metropolitan Historical Commission's purpose and activities are to preserve, promulgate, and promote an accurate historical knowledge of Metropolitan Nashville and Davidson County, actions separate and distinct from those of MHCC. And whereas the flawed HDR report has now resulted in support for a bill before Metro Council, BL 2025-742, which proposes to consolidate the staffs of MHC and MHCC under the authority of the Planning Department, and was written and introduced without due diligence to gather feedback from the agencies affected, without any public hearings or public engagement. And now therefore be it resolved that the Metro Historic Zoning Commission hereby express its criticism of the HDR report, and calls for an amendment to Bill BL 2025-742 to maintain the Metro Historical Commission as a standalone body, in consideration of other amendments which could ensure Nashville's strongest protections for historic properties to preserve and enhance the quality of life enjoyed by Nashville citizens.
How does that sound?
Well, I was gonna say, I mean, I think one tactic that we should consider is clearly, if we concede that this is the direction it's heading, to try and make it as palatable as possible. So, I mean, I think that's what, not the resolution, I mean, the, the, the real, the situation itself, right? And so, I mean, I think that's probably where we need to pivot to. I do wonder, I don't think Mina can hit me with anything from down here, but do we even, should we even?
Capitalize me, so be careful.
Yes.
Should, uh, should we even, we're the Metro Historical, Historic Zoning Commission. Should we even wade into what happens to the MHC? Or should we let them fight that on their own? I don't know. I'm, I'm not saying I feel one way or the other about that, but I just, as we move forward, I don't know.
I'll, I'll offer.
Yeah.
I'll offer this specifically to your question. I don't know if procedurally it makes good sense, but I do know we're on TV, and I do know that we have the attention of a couple of council members, and the MHC meetings are not as broadly.
Right.
Paid attention to, so.
And they're not televised?
Yeah. I, I think if you're gonna say something, you wanna say it to an audience as opposed to a, a party of none. I, I don't know if it's the, I get what you're saying is that we're the, we're, we're being manipulated, we're, we're holding up that perhaps the others shouldn't be manipulated, we should, I get that. We, yeah, well, viewed as such, but I, I think you speak when the audience is there, and so that would be my, appropriate or not, that would be my, my response.
You know, I think for, you asked me, for courtesy to our co-commission and department, I, I'm gonna be at the meeting. You all can come to the meeting to hear what they, what that commission has, you know, right? And whether they agree to it. And, and I think this is, this is the way we talk. This is the way it should be open. And so to have that, my courtesy as chair of MHCC is to have the courtesy to MHC and the chair, and all of those commissioners, to say, what do you think about it? Now, if we have time, from what I've discussed with legal, and legal only, is that we, we would have a very short window of time, but, for, to hear. But I think maybe, maybe, again, during the meeting, MHC may do their own resolution.
Right.
Right? So for us, in our purview today, is what this looks like. Two versions. We need to weigh in on it, because again, we got MHC on that, but are we gonna move on our own? You know, this, I, I do like the calling for an amendment. That, that wording is much softer. I think we don't wanna, you know, we're gonna, we don't wanna burn our bridges. It's not what we do. You know, we, we want to work together, and we wanna be collaborative with, with planning, you know? Because I'm sure that the staff has, has had recommendations from them. They, they do their job, and that's what, that's what we're, you know, we know. But I think here is the, the opportunity, because if not, we're not gonna have another meeting till next month, and that's, that's over. Maybe there's another, no, I'm not even gonna say that. Yes, please, Commissioner Williams?
Here's what I'm grappling with. I don't, I think we are connected with MHC in some very profound ways, right? Because they are doing the work to determine what is historic. So by definition, historic preservation means you're restoring, or protecting the built For their own survival, it might be best for them to, to operate independently, but I don't think we can entirely disconnect ourselves from MHC. A lot of the histories of the communities that we are talking about are preserving. They are the ones that are highlighting this. First, I want, Commissioner Price, I think you did a outstanding job with this proposal. I'll put that on the record. My biggest concern is how quickly things are moving, and I don't know if there's anything we can do about that. But being a historian of this city, I know how things usually turns out when we move fast, right? First Baptist Church, Capitol Hill, which I could probably make a pretty convincing argument that it should have been a national landmark in this city. It's now a parking lot that barely has 10 cars parked in, at any given time. I met Commissioner Cotton with, we were working on Fort Negley, and that was something that was fast-tracked. And the outcomes on most of those things were negative, but we were able to prevail in that. But also what I want this committee to consider is what this means for the rest of the city in terms of preservation, because Nashville is much, much larger than just South Broad. We may be laying the groundwork for the removal of large portions of our population. So I'm thinking in terms of North Nashville, I'm thinking in terms of historic neighborhoods in Edgehill and, and, and others. I don't have the connections that many of y'all have up on the hill. I'm just a little professor out there at Tennessee State University, but I, I think, I don't know, I don't like us rushing to decisions on this. And I think we need to take into account how it's gonna impact our more marginalized communities. Because whichever way things go on South Broad, I feel like next stop is gonna be some other areas. Might be Donaldson, might be Hermann Diddich, other areas.
To bobtail on that, um, maybe that's why council hears us to say we need more time to have that kind of engagement, because there's so much information that is not clarified. Um, the other thing I want to say too, is let, let's just have the scenario of if MHCC is brought into planning, let, let's, let's talk that, and MHC is a standalone. Like most of your departments, they, they confer with other departments. It's not like we're gonna stand alone and not, not have consulting with our MHC. See, does that make, does that make sense, Commissioner? So, you know, that is still gonna be a practice of a department to discuss other things with the fire department, or the water department, or, you know, parks, or anything like that. You know, we've heard that in our Metro Historic Commission meetings. You know, those are, that's why the MHCC does report under the MHC during our meetings, so that there's, there's information that's exchanged to say, here's what's happened. And so we're gonna, we're gonna still have a relationship, I mean, I have faith in that, and still have voices to, you know, but that's, that's a practice of all the departments anyway.
I guess my, my response would be, um, right now, that, that relationship is intimate, for lack of a better term. Because anytime I wanna know something that's going on with zoning, or MHC, I pick up the phone and either call or text Tim Walker. I'm not convinced or sure how that's gonna play out with planning, because now you have a new overlord, so to speak. Somebody that doesn't have any experience or, or relationship with preservation, not as we understand it. So those are just my concerns.
I watched the council meeting where Councilperson Benedict brought this bill forth, and there was some talk that, that, and, you know, it's just talk in, in, in the council meeting, that this would probably be deferred. And so I'm not too sure that we are totally 100% under the gun at this point. I think that the state, this is just my little opinion, that, that the, the state, as long as we're working towards a resolution, that, that they will hold off. And so, and I think I've heard from neighborhood groups and, and other people that are gonna push for that deferral. And so I just thought I'd put forth my opinion that this may not be as much under the gun as, as we think.
Commissioner, on your, um, your intel about downtown, because you're on several boards there and have been in the neighborhood, have they reached out to the Broadway group to, to have conversation and collaboration with that?
The Broadway group is the one who started this, who reached out to the state. All right? And so, what?
Has your groups talked with them?
The district has not.
Okay.
The district, we're patterned after the National Trust for Historic Preservation that believes that economic development is the best way to save our buildings. And so we're cheerleaders down there. And, you know, a lot of times, development and preservation, ah, like that. We've had some very interesting discussions over the years among our group, but we have not weighed in on this proposal. And I am not part of the Broadway Entertainment Association, that if you're part of that, you have to own a building down there.
Even if you're a resident?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And have a bar that serves alcohol, you know? And so, so it's very limited.
You certainly are.
I'm sorry?
I said, you certainly are.
And so, um, in my six years on this commission, this is the most difficult situation that we've been involved in. Our mayor believes, I think, that this is the right path, and from what I understand, and, and I, I respect our mayor. I think, you know, he, he redid Sunnyside for us, and, and, and he's a, he's a fine, fine elected official. There are other elected officials who, who I'm not as fond of, but I will leave that be. And so, um, but I question whether or not we don't have more time.
Interesting that you mentioned Sunnyside, because that's a question too, what happens? That's also up in the air. You know, we've had several, we ju, we just celebrated that, that location, and much deserved for the mayors that have pushed that through the budget with council. It's beautiful. And so, but again, that's in question, you know, what happens to that, which is Metro Parks jurisdiction, but anyway.
So, um, I'm gonna, I have a, maybe a little, not a little bit, I have a unique, more unique perspective, having worked with planning and being a representative to the Downtown Code, and historically asked to and willingness to serve to solve a signage problem, which is pretty important to selling beer and being in the entertainment business down on Broadway. And so I'm gonna speak in questions, because I, I don't have, I don't have the answers, don't pretend to have the answers, but I do know what's factually happened in the past. And I'll start with, I had the opportunity to, somebody shared with me, a good friend who I go to the Panthers games with, shared a picture circa 1985, something like that, of what Broadway looked like at that time. And I think it's disingenuine of anybody to argue, when you see that picture, and then you see the, the entertainment district that's down there now, that we're obstructionist, or that nothing happens, or we don't allow anything to happen, given the number of rooftop bars that are down there, that do allow people to take money out in garbage bags at the end of an evening, or however you wanna describe it. So that's just flat, blatantly not the case. Regulatory frameworks are messy, they're ugly, and we piss people off on a regular basis. And it's just, that's just, Planning Commission does the same. And so it's a messy business, and we're here for it. Uh, you know, I, most of the time, I think lots of people leave here, most people, for and against, leave here unhappy, and I, I don't know how to fix that, and I'm really not interested in fixing that necessarily, because again, dealing in regulatory frameworks, be it the state legislature or anywhere else, it's a messy business. And so that I do know for, for a fact, and I also know for a fact that we're not unyielding, and we are not a body that acts haphazardly, and in fact, we've been taken to court on many occasions, and would be taken to court more frequently if we didn't act within, if we were just, whatever the breeze was of the day, we, that just wouldn't hold up, and we would keep Anne in a job, but, well, maybe more so than we already do. One thing I will point to that, or I, I said I have questions, I think it's been brought up, what does this look like? How will be, will we be, how will the efficacy of this body and of the staff be improved if we're under planning, or if the department has moved to planning? I don't know the answer to that, and there certainly hasn't been, I haven't been pointed in the direction of that. I don't know whether that's a good or bad thing. Based on the uniqueness that I referenced earlier, I, as a representative from this body to the Downtown Code, we rarely see, it's, it's occasional, but we rarely see an asset that, a historical asset that we're asked to give an opinion about. When, when, when one appears, we do, but I don't have a problem working with the planning staff, and I think that regulatory framework, while writ, not written as specific, but these guidelines are, people leave there all the time. Yeah. I mean, it's, again, it's messy. And so how will this improve the situation? I, I don't know the answer to that. I, I think we need more answers to that, and who reports to whom, and, and how, how those things work. I don't need to see an org chart, but I need to see more than, I, I think it would be beneficial to the citizens of Metro Davidson County to know some more about that, for a lot of the reasons that have been stated here today. And so I, I would request that. The one thing I do wanna, one additional thing I wanted to point to is that the signage in, in this town, and I don't have the dates, I do have the receipts, but I don't have the dates of when it really came to a head, and when the Merchants Association was definitely affected by the messiness of an overlay of. of an overlay of MDHA. You had historic, and it covered some properties, not others. You had the zoning, you had the signage in the code, you had the signage guidelines. None of those things spoke to each other. It finally came to a head, and enough people didn't know what to do, that all the groups that were affected by that, there was representation by downtown businesses, and specifically businesses that are mostly affected by that signage, and really are in an arms race to attract people to come to Nashville and be a part of the tourism that's here. And I'm great, I'm for that. Robin, myself, and others, along with planning, we came together and we proposed a solution, it passed council, we approved the guidelines here, had the influence that we felt was important to maintaining that district. So, I offer that up, for those who wanna pay attention and go, look at it, as evidence both of the staff and of this body being willing, not being unyielding, but being willing to do something that inevitably was good for the city. And I think, given the opportunity, we'll continue to do that. Whether that's under-planning or independent, I'm not smart enough to know the answer to that, but I think dealing more so in facts and less in hyperbole is what needs to happen.
Do we have time to educate ourselves, that's the question? Or do we have to, well, ever, but do we have to make a decision right now?
In the absence of information, I don't know how I would educate myself anymore than I'm educated at the moment.
Right.
It all depends on the state bills, you know, I mean, that's, you know, you roll the dice. You say, gosh, you know, we wanna make it perfect here in Metro, and you roll the dice on the General Assembly. That's the timing. So, I agree with Commissioner Mosley. You know, no regulatory body, no zoning ordinance, no historic guidelines is a perfect tool. And there's messiness in there. Whether moving to planning kills the essence of this, you know, I don't know. But that's, I suspect not, you know. The thing that I've said is that I think it all depends on the planning director. If you have a planning director that's pro-preservation, probably gonna be just fine. But when the cuts come along and things come along, that's one of the reasons I'd like to see a story commission come out, because if the word comes down, the mayor says, let's cut, you know, 5% out of the budget, I could see some of those things, the story commission do not come to the same level as things that are critical for the planning and development process.
I caught that on the budget. There is no guarantee on budget. Counsel, Legal, can you give us, you know, Commissioner Cotton has asked about a timeline, I would know it, but I'd rather hear it from you.
So, I don't have a crystal ball, but my best understanding of the timeline at this moment is that it's possible that an amendment, a substitute bill, could be filed by next Friday, if one were proposed.
Amendment from us?
Oh, no, no, just at council.
Just the council? Yeah, let's be clear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. So, in terms of what's happening at council, my understanding is that there is about a week. And if this body were to, you know, appoint, you know, a committee to, you know, come together next week to think about, to brainstorm what you might wanna see, that is something, that's a possibility.
That was my question, can we do a called meeting?
Of the entire, I mean, you could do a special called meeting of the entire commission, it might be hard to get everyone together, that's not out of the question. Or you could designate a smaller group, or however you wanna go about it.
Pointing a committee. Okay, wait, so, clearly, right now, there's two hearings by the council. So, second reading is when? March 4th? Third reading is when?
That'll depend on the public meeting.
March 18?
That depends on the public meeting, right? But again, we don't have a crystal ball.
This is just right now, just that we know, here's the timeline, you asked about a timeline. So, March 4, excuse me, March 18 is third and final. So, unless the cosponsors of that bill can get the council to say, let's defer this and have more conversation, because that's what I'm hearing, we need more conversation, that's up to them. I don't think we control that.
No.
There you go. So, by hearing us right now, we are pleading the case that we need more time. But again, as Vice Chair said, the push is with the legislation. If you do, you take the risk.
Yeah, I don't know that we plead the case, I mean, I don't know that we take the risk at the risk of losing all historic preservation in Davidson County.
Do we?
That's what I'm saying, I don't know that we do take that risk.
From what Vice Chair has heard...
That's what I'm saying. I'm agreeing with Vice Chair Stewart, that if we, I'm agreeing with Vice Chair Stewart.
Meaning? We're at risk.
We're at risk.
Right. I just wanted to be clear.
Right, oh, we're at risk, and I, again, in thinking of not just historic preservation, but also the staff, if...
We don't control that either.
Oh, I know, but we...
We are very respective of our staff, they know this.
No, I'm not trying to control the staff, I'm saying I'm worried about these staff.
Of course.
And I am worried about every angle of this for the staff. And so, how do you triangulate this, right? That's the hard thing.
I have a question, just a clarification from Commissioner Stewart. From your understanding, is the mandate to pass this bill, or is the mandate to work on it and look at it? I mean, to pass it, like, now? Okay.
Now, it can be amended, but if we spend six months, or even three months, or two months, you know, trying to solve all the, answer all the questions, then, yeah, then I think the state will take action if we don't.
Okay.
You got more comment? I just, you want more comment? Okay. You sure? Okay, you're gonna hold it just a minute? Think about a minute. We're not over.
I'm thinking the long play here, and how are things dissolved? And there's a possibility of that, if capitulation happens, and I'm basically saying without saying it, so, yeah.
I have one thing to add, and it's just, I want it on record. People have asked me what it's like to serve on this commission, and my comment always is, it is democracy at its finest. We have a staff, they have a set of rules, they interpret them, we discuss them, we vote. It doesn't get any better than that. So, part of the point that someone said is, if it isn't broken, why aren't we fixing it? And I think it isn't broken. However, I think we do need to deal with the realities of where we find ourselves. So, it seems like, to me, I'm not as well-versed as some of you are, but that we probably should look at pointing a committee to try to work on these amendments. It's a suggestion, it's not a motion, it's just a suggestion.
And Legal, if that is so, should we have a motion?
Well, under the rules, the chair can actually appoint a committee, so at your discretion.
Okay. Oh, wow. I have control over one thing.
May I add a couple more comments?
Sure, absolutely.
I just wanna say, I really appreciate each and every one of you and your perspectives and what you've brought here today. I obviously am pretty upset by the situation, and I got it off my chest, I wrote this resolution. I don't know that we need to move on it today. We've let our opinion be known, what we think about all of this. And I really appreciate Vice Chair Stewart's tempering of my emotional reaction, because there's one thing I really appreciate about him and all of you is the deliberative process here really does work, I think. And it helps me personally and professionally of how to think about these things. And I just want that on record, to say that we might not need to vote on this today. But I think the committee that we're talking about is an important next step.
You wanna, hmm? I was gonna call on you, anyway.
Well, it's better to volunteer to be volunteered. I wanna first, I can be Debbie Downer on the commission sometimes, but I do wanna thank staff, they're consistently diligent, prepared. Prepared for the compromises they think we might make. I mean, they are playing moves ahead of us, and anticipating, and do a lot of work. And I know everyone comes up and thinks staff, and they probably have to, but I think that is sincere, and I know you were prompt and diligent in trying to get to a yes. And I respect all of that, and I wanna make sure that's upfront. And the same with the passion of the commissioners. I think everyone here is speaking from their heart and their head, and what they think is best for Nashville, and historic preservation in Nashville. And I try to as well, I don't have nearly the, I'm sure, I am an uncredentialed historic and historic, but I am passionate about the city and housing and zoning. And I do try to speak from that passion. And I really appreciate Commissioner Price's, that was very well thought out, and clearly impassioned, but also, I thought was informative, and good. I don't think I want to exactly be part of a resolution, because I think a lot of what we're doing here is that. I mean, we said "we" a lot, we, the people that have just been speaking for a while, don't really have much say in what's gonna happen. Not technically, at least. And I think that the say we do have is hopefully to be a constituent, and hopefully a volunteer leader in trying to impact our council members and our elected representatives, who I think are doing the best they can, and the best they think for the city, with the constraints that are put on them, both, you know, at all levels. So, thank you. A couple of minor points of just kind of my thoughts on this, and I won't get into the recommendations, or really, the report itself, or the recommendations, or, I do agree, there are a lot of questions on how a integrated or subsumed, how that does operate in practice. I think there's gonna be a lot of work that would have to go into that, were it to come to pass, to figure out, you know, where the bathrooms are. I think I'll second a couple of the commissioners, maybe Commissioner Stewart, in that a lot of what we do does involve a degree of compromise. And I think that if something is going forward, trying to make the best version of it is a prudent quality in life. And I think that, and I know that by our statute and purview and passion and inclination, were historic preservation to be the most important thing to the city, having a completely independent agency is probably a good idea. Were it to be an important, but one of several considerations that affect this city, both in downtown and over 12% of the parcels of the city, then having more integration in planning, and various departments that take into effect many considerations, is probably not a death knell for preservation or the city, or, and I think that maybe should not be feared as much, or at least should try to be compromised with. And let me just give you one thing that has bothered me since I've been on the commission, and I whined about it, and so, I will bring it up now.
Why not?
I whined. So many of the violations come before us, and even the Richland Neighborhood Association speaker brought it up, and so many. Well, they just didn't get their inspections. And that's just not true. They got their codes inspections, no one does that, no one forgets that, because they have to. They have to get to the next one. But they're not tied in. When they go in and call for a framing inspection, and not a historic framing inspection, it just, there's nothing in the system, because we're not integrated at all. It's two different systems, I've complained to planning and historic about this. There's nothing they can do, apparently, to make that one call. It would save so much grief, so much money, so much wasted effort, were that to be one call. And they go out there together, or at least were notified by the same, I mean, it is incumbent on the builder, it's their fault. But we, you know, making things better, making things easier, should be a goal, not to say, well, they screwed up, because they did, and we hammer them pretty good. Their fault. But I hope, if things come to pass, that we can look for the positives in integration, or whatever, I don't have a, it's above my pay grade to opine on any possible solution, except that I do believe the state has ideas that they have not, in regards to Nashville, been especially surgical in the precision of those ideas, and...
It's very diplomatic. Thank you.
Very.
I, and in some ways, I think they are often doing what they think is best for the state, same as we're doing. I wanna give people the benefit of the doubt always, until proven otherwise. And I think having, I think historic is important, I think this body is important and does good work. And I think that also, at the same time, having historic be a consideration and not the consideration is something to think about from a citywide perspective. I mean, we're here for a reason, that's to enforce the guidelines, they can be rigid sometimes, which makes us come across as rigid. But I think that when you have an independent agency that, I mean, I know we talked about, we don't do zoning, and that's fair. But it's also not fair. If we have regulations on the height, materials, placement on the lot, contextual, all this kind of stuff, that has an effect. To say that we don't do, we don't impact that is, it's not true. I mean, I, we have an effect on 12% of the parcels in the city. City has needs beyond historic preservation, while those should be and are accounted for, and I, like I said, there are so many questions to how any of this wires to work out. But I think taking a wider perspective, it might be useful in thinking about how to get past what is, seems like a dangerous or a rocky period of the river here, and trying to, you know, think what's best for historic, and what's historical preservation in the city, and what's best for the city. Because those two, I think, are close, but may not be exactly the same. And I will, I think I'll leave it at that.
So, I hate to say this, and I made the mistake with my children, but my six-year-old granddaughter is about to celebrate her sixth birthday, so I'm gonna go.
Well, before you go, let's just hear this out, too. The resolution, and I hear not ready to do that, so, will that be, we could bring that into committee? And does this have to be unanimous? Does it have to be unanimous to have a resolution?
I mean, it would just, it would be, you know, your usual voting number, I think a majority of the commission.
So it would be whatever, quorum.
If, if someone wants, I guess it depends, like, if the commission would like to vote on one of the, either the original resolution or the resolution as amended, um, you could vote on one of those if you'd like? Or you don't have to vote on any of them?
And if it does go to executive committee, would we have the ability or the authority to shift some wording? Would, would the, would we be given the approval by the commission to say, okay, we, we trust the executive committee that they're gonna make the right shift? I mean, we can vote on it, I, you know?
So it depends on what you envision this committee doing and what you think is the best use of it. Um, you, you have a window here where it seems that you might be able to be a voice in the process of potentially like amending something before council. And you, and that is one function of the committee, if you choose to have one. Um, or if the, you could work on the resolution, or you could leave the resolution and just work on amending the bill. It just kind of depends what you envision the committee being for, what you feel would be the best use of your time and the time that you have.
I, I hear that, I don't, before we do that, another thing, too, about a check and balance a bit that we read, and that this bill doesn't say we're not gonna have a metro historic zoning commission, or it does not say we're not gonna have a metro historic commission. So that's two. So those are gonna stay intact. So when, if, in the event, and if that's a scenario that it moves to zoning, let's just be really, because I've thought about this, like, how does this commission work? Because it's us, it's us. Is that staff will make a recommendation, just the same. Staff makes a recommendation, recommendation goes to the zoning. So there's a little bit of that stopgap, too. It would probably have some discussion with planning, but we still have some voice to say, here's the, I'm just, again. Um, there's the assumption, but, but it was said, that's not moving a commission.
We're not changing the charter.
No.
We're not changing the metro charter, the bill does not change.
Right, I mean, I guess. Okay, if you've read it and you're a lawyer, o- okay, I don't know.
It doesn't change the metro charter. And so, I, you know?
Just to say, I didn't hear it. I didn't see that, I didn't read it, that the commissions would be dismantled. I didn't read that.
That is correct.
That's correct, my legal. So, with that said, we still have, you know, we have some authority here, still, you know? It, it's moving staff, I think, is our thing. So, okay, just to have clarity on that. We should, Legal has suggested, go.
I'd like to make a motion that the chair appoints a select committee to study the bill and offer, uh, amendments or, or critiques or, or advice.
Second.
Okay. And there's the motion, all in favor of the motion.
Hi.
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 You can, you made the motion, yeah. And you made the motion. So are there any opposed? Okay, so that motion passes. Legal, is there anything else you need to tell us about that?
You should appoint a co- a committee.
A commit, appoint a committee right now?
That's in your purview, yes.
Okay, um, and then we vote on that, too, right? Or I just, I'm, as, okay? This is what I, um, would like, and I hope that you all won't fire me for it. Is that I would be on the committee, Vice Chair would be on the committee, and I would ask for Commissioner Price to be on the committee. Okay? Um, if, is there anyone else that would like to be on the committee?
Why are you looking at me, Manay?
Because you've got a green button on, I want to make sure you're good. Would you, would you not? Any, please?
We serve on the committee, but I don't need to be on the committee.
No, I, I want to have...
In, in, in the effort of, 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 um, differing viewpoints and things, I would like to nominate, uh, Commissioner Smith to be on the committee.
Can you, can you do it?
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll accept, I promise not to talk.
Oh, please.
Too much, too much.
Please.
I, I'm, I'll...
So I accept that. If you, if he accepts it, somebody is, then we have four. Okay?
Are you going to be voting on anything? Four is not a great number.
Four is not a great number.
I, I understand that.
I'm, I'm just pointing out numbers.
Well, I'm taking myself out of consideration.
Okay.
I have, I'll be out of commission for about six weeks, so...
No, I know four is not a good number, it has to be an e- an uneven number.
If you're not voting on anything, it doesn't matter.
Well, we mu- we might. Legal?
I think it's likely you'd probably need to come to decisions about what kind of, if, if you, if you decided that you wanted to put forward, like, compromised language, then you'd probably be doing that. Four doesn't necessarily mean you'd always tie. I mean, I think that it's perfectly...
The question, the question I have is, is our, um, we haven't even voted to see whether we're gonna do any of these resolutions.
Correct. It's not clear to me that you want to vote on this.
Unless you want to.
I mean, unless you want, the commission wants to...
I don't, I'd like to pull them.
They're, they're gonna make suggestions for amendments to the bill. Is that what it is?
You're not voting on resolutions? Well, Commissioner Price has, has wanted to pull that.
Okay.
I can, I can fix this real quickly. I would make a motion that we would defer action on any resolution and that the committee would, uh, after finding a fact and further discussion, would take up that on behalf of this commission.
Okay. And you would bring it to the commission again? So that's...
Timing wise, I don't know, I would defer to, um, it's a representative body, so...
It's a representative body, you're gonna trust us.
I'm, if you ask, I made the motion, yes, I, I trust you, and, and I, I think certainly with the makeup of it, yes would be my answer to that, so the motion stands.
Okay. I, I like the fact to, you know, Commissioner Cotton has made a, quite a bit of, um, a pin. And you have made an a pin, and you are part of metro, you're part of planning as well. So, but I think that voices, we have to have that to say, what, what is a balance of voices? I, 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 I like that. So it'll be Commissioner Price, Commissioner Cotton, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Stewart, and myself. That's five. Sound good?
Make a motion to approve?
There's a, there's an open motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor.
Oh, second.
Sec, I, I don't care, second or second, choose one. We've had a long day, it's been a long conversation.
Do you want to restate the question of the motion on the floor?
Yes.
Yes.
Rest- I'm restating the question, is that we, we are voting on that we have approval of the five commissioners that will be on the ex...
Okay, no, I believe the question before you, um, had to do with deferring, um, discussion of the resolution, is that correct, Commissioner Mosley?
Oh, oh, okay.
Would you like to restate it?
We got in the middle of all that. So deferring the resolution for execution?
And that the committee would take up any resolution and if, and the question of what and how?
Okay, and that in addition to considering potential, like, amendments?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And then they potentially would bring that back to the commission?
Okay, he made the motion?
Yeah.
Who seconded?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All in fav-?
I have one more question.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Wait, well, let's finish, let's just finish it and then...
It is about this vote.
Yeah, so let's, let's have...
Okay, so all in favor?
Time for discussions, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second, let's have time for discussion.
Okay, so, this committee is going to make the decision about whether to set forth a resolution?
Correct, that is one of the...
That's one of our goals.
Of the goals.
Okay, alright, I just want to... Good to clarify, Commissioner Mayhaw. Okay, so we've had a motion, had a second, had a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay? Any opposed? Alright, thumbs up. Um, just final, I thank you all for, you know, engagement. Um, it's been a tough, um, some of us who have been in, in midst of conversations with our council members. And if you still want to do that, that's fine, it's always good for our council members to hear. But, um, I so appreciate you personally for all the time and all the decision-making and discernment and professionalism that you all have. I would, I just want to take a bow for all of you, so, thank you, and I think...
Manay, I have one more item.
One more, okay.
Um, we've lost two preservation titans, uh, this month since our last meeting. Uh, Mr. Steve Turner, who, um, built Butler's Run, was a big supporter of the district. And the district doesn't get political, just so you know. We, we try to stay away from politics, we're cheerleaders. And, but he has provided us a place to meet, he's been a huge supporter of us and a huge supporter of Second Avenue. The second one that we've recently lost is Barbara Curlin, who started Goody's in the late 70s. And it, if you have an opportunity to read the obit that she wrote, you'll love it. And, uh, her, her daughter was Amy Curlin, who, who did Bluebird.
Bluebird.
But Barbara was the godmother of the beginnings of, of Second Avenue as, when I arrived. And, um, and I just thought I'd like to recognize both those titans...
Thank you.
In, in, uh, Second Avenue history.
Yes. Steve, Steve and Judy Turner, for that matter. Yeah, yeah, got it. Titans, Steve Turner and Barbara Curlin. Yes, we thank you for your heart and passion. Okay? Alright, I think we're, I think we're... Thank you, motion adjourned. Thank you all.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.